I'd like to call to order the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jeff or other staff members, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Any requests from the diocese that we shift things around? Hearing none, then we'll keep the agenda as is. Our first item is Agenda Item 4A, a presentation, receive a presentation from Peninsula Clean Energy on electrification reach codes. Good evening, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Albert, members of the council, and city staff, and members of the public. My name is Rafael Reyes. I'm Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy. And what I'd like to do here for you is to first offer a little bit of background on PCE. I think most of you are likely familiar with PCE, and then discuss the building reach code effort that we're supporting throughout the county. First of all, as most of you are aware, Peninsula Clean Energy is the primary energy service provider for San Mateo County, established by unanimous vote of all the cities and the county back in 2016. And our core mission is to provide cleaner power at lower rates. And in addition to that, excuse me, in addition to that, we have a couple of key objectives that we have through our work is to also help support the drive to reduce greenhouse gases and improve the economy of San Mateo County. And this initiative really is aimed at both of those underlying objectives. I'm happy to note on that last item that PCE is already delivering a benefit of over $18 million a year to ratepayers throughout the county through the lower rates that PCE provides. On reach codes, first of all, what are reach codes? As you know, you're in the middle of a building cycle right now. The state operates on a three-year building cycle for updating the building codes to enhance a whole variety of elements of those codes. Local governments have the option to adopt additional enhancements to the building codes. They may do so at any time, but it's helpful if they're done in conjunction with the state building code updates. Those local enhancements are often called reach codes, denoting the additional objectives that a local government may have in adopting those particular codes. In this project, PCE is supporting local governments specifically on code enhancements on building electrification, which speaks to moving to electric appliances over natural gas to reduce greenhouse gases, as well as enhancements to EV readiness by enabling more people to have access to or to own electric vehicles through improved access to charging. This is only in relation to new construction, so none of what I'm discussing here is related to remodels or tenant improvements and the like. Brief review of the benefits that many see around enhanced building codes in these areas. One is significant economic value that can be delivered. Just to take one data point, we are encouraging adoption of electric vehicles. The region is rapidly moving in that direction. Sales at the end of last year were approximately 17% of new personal vehicles, so rapid rate of adoption there. And we aimed for 45,000 electric vehicles in the county by 2025. Reaching that target would deliver over $50 million of annual benefit to the county through reduced fuel costs. So a given individual driving an electric vehicle typically saves between $1,000 and $1,500 a year on reduced costs for energizing or fueling an electric vehicle. In addition, electrification also offers lower costs, particularly on construction, for electric buildings, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. Obviously, reduction of greenhouse gases, which is a significant benefit to the region. And there's also an element associated with avoided future costs. The region and the state is moving towards ultimately a net zero goal in terms of carbon emissions. And anything that's built now that is not ready for that target will incur additional costs to convert that building, to upgrade that building to zero carbon in the future. So one example of some of the economic benefits here, data on the relative cost of an all-electric building versus a mixed-fuel building. Typically, there is savings here, in the case of single-family homes, of over $10,000 in reduced cost of construction. This data comes from a number of sources, including independent research that the UC system sponsored back in 2017. And coming out of that research, the UC system decided all future construction would be all-electric, because they determined it was less expensive to build all their building classes, from dormitories to classrooms to laboratories, as well as having ongoing operating costs, which is essentially a wash, so equivalent between the all-electric buildings and the mixed-fuel buildings. This diagram has a lot going on. I'm not going to go through all of it, but this is one of the other cost-effectiveness studies. This is from a firm called E3, a state-sponsored study. And this study evaluated all of the different components, appliance components that goes into a home. And if we walk around and, you know, let's say choose a water heater up at the top, what this shows is the cost of construction is reduced by over $500, just over $500 for installing an all-electric water heater as opposed to a gas-water heater. But the monthly cost can go up, on average, about $7. The summary here, taking all the components of the cost, brings us to these numbers. Typical single-family all-electric home, again, the $10,000 reduction, a little over $10,000 reduction for an all-electric home. There is a modest increase in the on-bill monthly cost. Now, this is important to dig a little deeper on what's going on here. This is in today's dollars. However, one of the data points that has become apparent is the future costs of natural gas and the natural gas system are expected to climb significantly. In fact, this was called out in the staff report. This future cost is a consequence of the fact that the entire state, both on generation and in end-use, the amount of natural gas that's going to be used in the state is going to go down, which is going to cause upward pressure on the natural gas rates, as a result of still having to maintain infrastructure associated with natural gas. In other words, this gap is likely to close. And even today, if the cost savings from construction were applied either to more energy efficiency or more solar, that would become a cost benefit to the end-user. And as you can see here, with increased solar, you can actually turn that around, and today have a cost benefit of typically $5 a month. There are three major models on building electrification that has emerged over the past year. Number one, what's been termed the natural gas ban, best known for the ordinance that was passed by Berkeley a number of months back. A number of cities have now moved in this direction. No natural gas hookup allowed in that case. A second model is what we've been calling the all-electric required, with some exceptions. In this case, this is under the energy code, and typically targets specific uses for appliances and that they be electric. There are exceptions typically made in this arena for certain building types, for example, restaurants, or laboratories, or specific uses. In some cases, some cities have said, we want to still allow gas cooking, and that's been part of the code that some cities have implemented. And a third model has been a choice model that says, okay, you can do all-electric, or you can do mixed-fuel, but if you do mixed-fuel, do it with increased efficiency requirements. On electric vehicles, there are three major levers, if you will, that you can pull. You can say, have code that speaks to the speed of charging, and there are three major levels. Level one, which is a standard outlet. Level two, which is a dryer outlet equivalent, or fast charging. Readiness, how ready it is in terms of whether a circuit is already in place. EV capable, for example, means that there's panel capacity and conduit, but not necessarily a full circuit. EV ready means the circuit is there and there's an outlet, or there's a charging station. Again, different levers that can be pulled from policy standpoint. And then the third, how many spaces are affected by a given code? So PCE ran a process starting in December of last year. That process included over eight public meetings for different stakeholders, some 350 participants through those meetings, and ultimately came to models which we are supporting, cities in adopting. Although I would add that the support that we're offering is for any direction that the city may wish to take. We will offer the technical assistance and support, and I'll speak more to that. But on building electrification, we are encouraging the all-electric with exceptions approach. And then on EV readiness, an EV readiness approach, which for residential units allows access to power for any resident in that location, and various levels for This chart itemizes where cities are at in terms of adoption. I should say it's a summary, because over 30 municipalities across San Mateo and Santa Clara County are considering reach codes at this time. What I want to call out here is we have a number of cities that have already moved to adoption. So you can see there, you know, across the three different models, Milpitas, Palo Alto, San Mateo have all adopted a mixed-fuel use approach. We have Brisbane, Menlo Park, Mountain View Pacifica, and San Jose that have adopted all-electric codes. And then a couple of cities have adopted full ban approaches, and then some variants in EV approaches. But the key takeaway here is increasing the charging access and levels. Last couple slides, want to speak to specific concerns that have been raised, and we've been in ongoing dialogue, not only with city elected officials, staff, as well as builders. And here are some of the items that have been brought up in terms of concerns around the reach codes. Distribution grid upgrades are the expensive. That is sometimes true in general, though the cost savings associated with electric construction more than covers any additional distribution upgrades that might be needed. Power shut-offs, it's a big issue, and we acknowledge that. And it's something that the building reach codes actually does not really change the context on that. In most cases, most modern appliances, especially those that go into new construction, do require electricity to operate. Now, with a stove, you can use a lighter to light them if you have no electricity, but furnaces, water heaters will not operate. Those that are installed today will not operate without electricity. So there remains a significant issue for the region on this. We clearly need grid hardening to address the issues associated with the grid. And in addition to that, PCE has come in, will be coming in soon, with a program that has committed up to $10 million to help improve resilience for those most in need and most impacted by the power shut-offs. Uniformity, this is naturally a concern among building officials. It's a reasonable concern to have. We have been working with cities to encourage uniformity. Of course, many cities adopt some variances in their code in any case, but we are seeing substantial uptake on the reach codes, and it's not just in our region. substantial uptake on the REACH codes, and it's not just in our region and the UC system, but major cities across the state are adopting REACH codes of various kinds. And so there is general consistency from the standpoint of electrifying particular space and water heating. There are often concerns about whether or not, how much power all-electric appliances use. Much of that concern comes from older awareness only of the older-generation resistance heating-style systems. The technology that we're dealing with here, heat pump water heaters and heat pump space heating is actually technology that's been around for a long time, but not widely commercialized in California. But most people are familiar with them through refrigerators, and that technology essentially moves heat from one place to another, does not actually create energy. And this is, these technologies have been shown to be highly effective in very cold temperatures. Is there enough clean energy on the grid? Absolutely, the answer there is yes. PCE is already delivering over 80%, greenhouse gas-free power, and will be moving to 100% renewable by 2025. And finally, there's sometimes concern among, among builders about equipment availability and things on that order. There actually is equipment that is available. As I mentioned, these technologies have been around. What is a gap is the lack of knowledge and training, and that is something that PCE will be addressing early next, starting early next year. So with that, moving to close, the technical, the support that PCE is offering includes $10,000 grant for cities who wish to explore. It's not a commitment, but those funds may, are intended to help support staff time associated with exploring implementation of codes. We have the model codes that PCE has developed, but again, we'll support cities who move forward with, under different codes. And then we have consultants available who are well-versed in the technical aspects of this for questions and technical guidance for, for cities, as well as additional adoption and implementation tools that we'll be making available. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rafael. What we're going to do is actually have public comment yet first, and then come back to questions that there may be from the dice, but thank you. So I'm going to call people up one by one. You'll have two minutes to address the council. Please recognize that there are countdown timers and yellow lights and red lights that will turn on when you're starting to run out of time or have run out of time. So first up is Gil Gosey, Gil, pardon me, Gail Gosey. Good evening, Gail.
Hi. My name's Gail Gose. I have lived in California and San Carlos since 2001. And most of what I was going to say has already been said, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, our Belmont-San Carlos chapter, and we support whatever PCE is recommending. And also, we want to be sure and stress that electric energy is healthier also for us and for all living things that share our planet, and is safer and more cost-effective for our communities. So tonight, we ask San Carlos Council to pass an energy REACH code similar to those adopted by other cities in, in the, in the state. And that's all I have to say, because I don't want to repeat what others have said. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Gail. Next up is Robert Whitehair. And by the way, if anybody else who has not yet submitted a card would like to do so, just fill one out and give it to Crystal.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity for a neighbor from San Mateo to speak before you. I'm requesting tonight that you adopt REACH codes that are as comprehensive as other cities have done in San Mateo, Brisbane, Menlo Park, Pacifica, San Jose, and the other cities that Rafael talked about. Eliminating natural gas, a fossil fuel, will create a swift transition away from the very worst and irrevocable impacts of climate change. I want to speak a little bit about my own perspective as a former public works director of San Bruno, and I'm also, have spent about 20 years in the, in the private sector as a facility director. I appreciate what you're trying to do by having codes that are easier for the builder to understand and easier for the citizens to deal with. But from my perspective, having dealt with that in many cities up and down the peninsula, consistency is the key. And so I'm asking that your code be consistent with the rest of the county to make it easier on builders and developers who want to bring a permit before you and want to, who install electric appliances. So I thank you for your time. I hope that you were able tonight to adopt a more comprehensive REACH code similar to what the other cities have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Trying to figure out which item somebody had wanted to speak on. Next up is Teri Nagel. Good evening, Teri.
Good evening, Chair Olbert and honorable council members. I'm delighted to be here tonight. I am really excited by the momentum and enthusiasm that people are showing on the peninsula for the adoption of REACH codes. And I think, as you heard so far, the count is 20 cities on the peninsula, I mean, excuse me, 20 in the state and 10 on the peninsula who have adopted at least the first reading. And there, this is also beginning to catch on, on the East Coast. I wanted to address three common misconceptions about them. One is that the technology is not here. It is indeed here, and it's true that our staffs do need to get up to the learning curve. But if you don't already have it, I'd like to share with you this handbook that shows some case studies of, this is the multifamily one, there's also one for single-family residences, and another one for commercial properties. And it shows not only case studies, but examples of the appliances, the furnaces, even pool heaters, everything you need to go electric. And this technology has been used in Europe for quite a long time. Another common misconception is that electric stoves are really dinosaurs. And I think if you have an opportunity to see the induction cooking, that will change your mind. It certainly changed mine. I have a gas stove that I didn't want to part with, but now I am ready to go for induction cooking. It is cleaner, it's safer, and also it's more effective in keeping out the fossil fuels from your home. And finally, power outages. All modern gas meter setups have an automatic shut-off system now. So if you are keeping too gas because you think that it's going to keep you going during a power outage, that's really changing. And there is significant, significant technology research going on for the various types of backups, available batteries and solar. So I urge you to consider joining the other cities in adopting REACH codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Next up is Gleibman de Souza. Good evening, Gleibman.
Good evening, honorable counsel and Chair Olbert. Thank you for listening to the presentation and considering REACH codes, like other cities in the county. Please consider the REACH codes in terms of generating new jobs in the area. IBW, the Electrical Workers Union, and the Building Trades Union in San Mateo County support the REACH codes, all-electric REACH codes, as does PG&E and its Transmission Union, which also supports the, the REACH codes. These REACH codes will generate new jobs in installing heat pump water heaters, heat pump air conditioners, and things like that. Thank you for considering REACH codes.
Thank you, Gleibman. Next up is David Britton. Good evening, David.
Hi. Thank you for hearing the presentation on, on REACH codes tonight. Kind of just stepping back a bit, a reminder on kind of why, why we're here today. A report from the UN's World Meteorological Organization today says there is no sign of a slowdown in the emissions of CO2, let alone a decline, and notes we need to increase the level of ambition. But why should we take action as a city? This is an international problem, and our state's doing a lot. You know, we, we can just follow them. Surely that's enough. The, the state regulation is looking, is finding a way of applying policy across the whole state. The state is obviously different. Every city has different, you know, setup. We should be looking to do what we can as a city to push things forward. And also, the, the actions cities on the peninsula and the state are taking is getting national attention. So our leadership on this gets other cities across, across the country to go, "Hang on a moment, those guys in California are doing something. We could try and do that, too." So there is a leadership aspect to this as well. From, from talking to city staff, there seems to be a concern about contractors not knowing what technology is available, what products are out there. This seems just like an education problem. This is going to have to change in the next few years. We might as well start now educating contractors on what the future is, what the products are, and how, how they change the way they build. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Suzanne Emerson. Good evening, Suzanne.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Emerson, representing San Carlos Green. I'm excited you guys are learning about REACH codes today. I want to talk about the health and safety aspects of burning natural gas in our homes. Natural gas, when you burn it, has byproducts of carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, formaldehyde, and small particulates. A natural gas stove inside a small or medium-sized home, if you're cooking a large meal, can easily produce the same amount of more pollutants than would be allowable if that were the outside air quality, which is to say your indoor air quality would violate state standards if it were outside, in a medium-to-small-size home, cooking a large meal over gas. A study in England found that women who lived in homes where natural gas stoves were used had twice the probability of suffering symptoms of lung disease and three times as likely to need asthma medication. Nationwide, about half of house fires are started by natural gas equipment, and after the Northridge earthquake, about half of the fires were triggered by broken gas lines. In my work, I do perform combustion safety testing. I'm testing for leaks on gas lines, and I'm checking the carbon monoxide levels. I have found natural gas leaking from the connections between the pipes to the furnace, to the water heater, and to the ranges in a variety of homes. Certainly not every home, but it's not at all unusual to find that methane leaking in the house. And carbon monoxide levels, there are certain standards that are acceptable in the industry, but there are a lot of homes where they have no idea that their, one of their burners is putting off a whole lot of carbon monoxide, or in the home that had the cracked heat exchanger, that that was why they were getting those chronic headaches, is because they were getting carbon monoxide poisoning. I encourage you to please consider and adopt robust REACH codes or a gas ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Next up is Christine Kolzog. And Christine, I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. I should know better.
No, you have not. Hello, everybody, honorable Mayor Olbert, council members, staff. My name is Christine Kolzog, and I'm a mother of a 12-year-old that is really much looking towards a bright future. And I'm also the executive director at Sustainable San Mateo County, where a respected longstanding nonprofit whose vision is a sustainable future for everyone in San Mateo County. So I want to commend San Carlos' continued efforts on the sustainability front, and I hope that tonight, the council will consider adopting a strong all-electric REACH code. And as our leaders, you know, the importance that, you know, strong design decisions carry, not only for the short term, but truly for the future. Because, you know, let's face it, I mean, buildings are going to be with, with us for many decades to come. So it's always easier, faster, and less costly, so in a word, really, more efficient to set things right from the get-go, rather than having to come afterward and, you know, fix it. So tonight, you can choose to join the many cities which have already committed to strong REACH codes, including Brisbane, Menlo Park, Pacifica, and San Mateo. And you have the opportunity to send a signal loud and clear. So in light of the county's recent climate emergency declaration, the time truly to act is now. So we at Sustainable San Mateo County are pleased to announce we are having a special REACH awards category at our award ceremony next spring to celebrate our cities leading with courage and intent. So with that, with my and my teenage daughter, and I hope the special kid in your lives, thanks for your consideration and continued commitment to a sustainable future for everyone in San Mateo County.
Thank you, Christine. Next up is Diane Bailey. By the way, before you start, Diane, I just want to clarify things, because several people tonight have, have made a comment, or made a comment that leads me to believe that they think we are, this is an action item and we are acting on something. We are not. This is a presentation which can lead to an action item down the road if we put it on a future agenda, but this is basically an educational opportunity for the council. Anyway, thank you, Diane. Over to you.
Good evening, Chair Olbert and council members, and thank you so much for hearing this item and this opportunity to speak in support of the REACH codes. My name's Diane Bailey. I run a small, climate-action-oriented group called Menlo Spark. We are working towards a zero-carbon future for Silicon Valley, and we're also proudly members of the Campaign for Fossil-Free Buildings in Silicon Valley. It's a campaign comprised of 30 different organizations that are all working together to accelerate a speedy transition away from fossil fuels in our homes and buildings throughout Silicon Valley. I'm here to urge your swift consideration of the REACH codes and commitment to bring back a Menlo Park-style, all-electric REACH code, to a vote for the city of San Carlos as quickly as possible. And I just want to note that it's so important for every city to lead on this issue as we experience really a profound failure of leadership at the federal level on climate. We know that we're in a climate emergency, as other speakers have indicated, not just because our county has declared a climate emergency, although that was very helpful. We think that's a great step. But we know every day, we breathe in the wildfire smoke, and we know that we're now facing a five-fold increase in wildfires throughout the state of California, and that is because of climate change. And we feel the more intense heat waves, and we know that the bay levels are rising, and that will really impact our critical transportation infrastructure, as well as some of our homes. So earlier this month, 11,000 scientists came together to make a statement and publish an article in the Journal of Bioscience. Their article showed that, how clearly and unequivocally that the Earth is facing a climate emergency, and noted that scientists have warned of the climate crisis for 40 years, and yet, the greenhouse gas emissions are still rapidly rising throughout the world with increasingly damaging effects. Forty years ago, we were concerned about polar bears and their ability to survive, but now, really, we humans are the polar bears. So we need bold action on climate, and that much is very clear. I see that I'm out of time. I just want to urge you to consider our requests, myself, all of my colleagues that have been before you today, to bring back the REACH codes and consider phasing out fossil fuels from new construction as swiftly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for honoring the timer. Next up is Kathleen Goforth.
Good evening, Kathleen. My name is Kathleen Goforth. I've been a resident of San Carlos for the past 32 years, and I really appreciate your willingness to, to hear this presentation and consider REACH codes. I know that the council at a previous meeting has already adopted the minimum building and energy codes that are required by the state, so it's, it's important, and I appreciate that you're willing to consider possibly going farther. The code that was adopted at your previous meeting, I believe, included requirement for pre-wiring to enable electrification at some unspecified future date. And when I first heard that, I thought, "Well, that's, that's thinking ahead," but then I realized, we, we don't have, we're, we're not in a thinking-ahead situation right now. Climate change is happening now, and we're, we're actually in a crisis. And so enabling electrification at some unspecified future date just seems like an inadequate response. And I think it's important that we consider going, going further sooner. It's important to recognize that pre-wiring doesn't have any environmental benefits unless and until the gas-fired appliances or gas-powered appliances that are installed during construction are actually replaced, and that could be many, many years down the road. And that could be many, many years down the road, and we simply don't have many years. The only way we are going to avoid the most catastrophic impacts of climate change is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and the only way to do that is to reduce the use of fossil fuels. And so continuing to allow gas to be installed in new construction is just taking us in exactly the opposite direction of what we know we need to be doing. As has already been mentioned, many communities on the peninsula are already, have already adopted reach codes or are considering doing so, and, uh, I, I think if San Carlos does not do that, at this time, we're going to find ourselves kind of behind the curve and out of step with local communities. And that kind of defeats the whole purpose of trying to make it as easy as possible for, for builders to, uh, to construct in this manner. So I encourage you to adopt, uh, reach codes and to direct the staff to develop, uh, reach codes, there are models available, and seriously consider prohibiting natural gas in new construction. Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this item? John, if you'd, uh, come up and address us and fill out a card and give it to Crystal, that'd be great.
I didn't fill out a card, but I didn't put off the, the side of the, uh, the others as well.
Right.
I, uh, seem to be the only one advising caution on this. You are aware that PG&E's wires have started, uh, if not most, many of the conflagrations that, uh, we've experienced here in Northern California. I'm sure that what, uh, what you do later on is likely to please the stockholders of GE, but, uh, I would ask you to possibly consider that, uh, joining with other cities in developing our own power distribution system.
Thank you John. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this item? All right. Questions from the dais of Raphael, or of staff? Adam?
Uh-oh. Um, I guess my question is for Chris probably, um, on the change. I guess I should put that on, sorry. I made a mess here. Um, can you tell me a little bit more about the pre-wiring and what the difference is and what that means? Cause we, I know we added that one thing into our, uh, current code, and just so I understand the difference of what's sort of being asked and what that includes and what that is.
Okay, so we, we, we did modify the, the electrical code, so to speak, and, um, we all cleaned up. Okay. So, uh, the, the, the code, um, the, uh, the, the prior code had already, um, EV ready requirements, um, written in. So we've been going down that road with, um, you know, encouraging electric vehicle charging installations and so forth. The new code, I should say the 2019 code, um, brought in the pre-wiring for water heaters. And what, um, San Carlos adopted was, um, pre-wiring for not only what the code requires, as I've just stated, but pre-wiring for cooking, future all electric cooking, future all electric, um, laundry facilities, and future all electric HVAC, for lack of a better phrase, heating. So that was our enhancement to the code, but we also reeled in with that, um, with those requirements, residential reconstruction as well. And I mentioned that in the two or three, uh, uh, council meetings prior. So that's our, uh, attempt, you could call it perhaps a reach code light. I refer to it more as a modification of the electrical code to, uh, address what staff felt was a, uh, deficiency in the code with regards to the state's approximate 10-year timeline toward getting toward, uh, all electric. And it is a 10-year timeline, I should mention.
10-year timeline for?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I've heard through, throughout, you know, not only from my peers, but from, um, some of the workshop that I took.
And then just in terms of, and then the net, we're looking three years out for sort of the potential next set of building codes that will come in from the stakes. It's not like we've just adopted one, and so presumably they'll keep getting more and more progressive.
Exactly.
Over time. And so it's a wiring piece, so for example, if I put in, um, gas, it would be pre-wired next to it to someone who wanted.
If you were building a new home.
Remodeling.
Exactly. Yes. Yes. Okay.
Uh, other questions? Sarah?
Thank you Mark. I just had a quick follow-up question to something that you said, Chris. You mentioned residential reconstruction. Is that remodels or scraping and building new?
It's a combination of the two. It's, you, you see these projects throughout the city. It's, you have, um, slightly over or over 50% of the perimeter walls remaining, and it's, it's not a full demolition, but it's, they're preserving 50% or more of the perimeter, um, walls. It's essentially a new house, but it's, it's a, uh, a demolition's being taken down to the bare studs, and, um, they're preserving a little bit over 50% or 75% or whatever of the home, but it's, uh, and, and, and that preservation of those walls is typically to preserve an existing non-compliant setback along one wall or the other. And so there's, there's kind of a devotion to these older setbacks that our current zoning allows if you preserve, uh, certain wall sections.
And in that case, you would not have to do the pre-wiring, or you would?
You would have to do the pre-wiring, because that's considered a residential reconstruction project. So we reeled those in, in addition to the, what we call it new construction that the California codes requires.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron?
Uh, thank you Chair Albert. I think I have a question for Chris and then a question for Raphael. Um, so every time the state upgrades their building standards, we follow suit, correct?
Correct.
Within how long of, of the time period or the time that they upgrade them do we follow? Is it a matter of months?
So the, so the, um, the, the, the new codes for 2019 came out in July 1st and become effective January 1st of 2020. There's always kind of a one year behind leg to it for publishing or whatever, but, uh, so the 2019 code has become effective January 1st, 2020. And, um, uh, cities, as was, as was mentioned previously, are allowed to enhance the code. Uh, we can't make it less restrictive, but we can, you know, choose to enhance the code based upon, um, various criteria.
So if you could give me a non-binding estimate that if this, as to when you believe the state will adopt codes that are pretty much in line with what PCE is, um, is suggesting?
I would, uh, expect the state to come back with a, a mid-year, um, adjustment to the code. That's typically done through the energy code, or the, I'm sorry, the, uh, Energy Commission. Uh, and then, um, within this upcoming 10-year time period, we're going to see very aggressive code enhancements that will march us toward all electric. Whether it's all electric with, with, uh, commercial and residential, or just residential, that, that, that's, um, that's something that the state needs to, that's something that requires state level outreach to, to address. And when we have, you know, local, um, efforts at addressing that, it becomes somewhat convoluted with all the various reach codes that then, um, become adopted or considered, as was evidenced with one of the slides that was shown. So to answer your question, perhaps in a different way, um, that within the next 10 years, we're going to see very aggressive enhancements to the code.
And I think ever since I've been on the council, the state's been, um, making the building codes more and more strict.
Very much so. In fact, we, we could go back to, um, our last, uh, green building ordinance that we had. The only green building ordinance, ordinance that we had was, uh, enforceable for maybe 18 months, nine, uh, maybe 18 months until when the, um, the state became more restrictive. So it automatically sunsetted our, um, green building ordinance. So the, what's all being discussed right here is going to be, um, implemented in the code, essentially, to some degree or another.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I just had one more question.
Oh, sure.
For Raphael. I was a little confused. You mentioned, in your presentation, um, uh, it was on your 11th slide, uh, Slide 11. There's a, a line in there that says, "State policy for grid hardening is the key." What does that mean?
Uh, grid hardening is, has become a term of art around how to ensure that the grid has, is robust and resilient enough to address, or to ensure that there isn't, um, triggering of fires or other problems that, that can occur. Uh, it's important to note on the fires that have been triggered by the, by the grid, while the fires were triggered by the distribution grid, the size and speed of those fires are directly related to the four-year drought, which is a direct result of climate change. So in other words, climate change is going to drive, uh, fires that are going, that, that, the, the scale of those fires, and, um, so one of the reasons why we would encourage, um, moving more quickly than the state, um, state codes is specifically to start to create that mitigation over these long-lived buildings that, um, that are going to be put in place, uh, and also to avoid the future costs of retrofitting those buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you Chair Albert, um, and thank you everybody for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective. Raphael, good to see you again. I sit on the board of PCE, and, um, that was a great presentation overview. A couple of questions for you, um, and it's a two-part question. So you talked about the demand for gas and the price of that will go up as, uh, demand for it drops. With respect to, I did a little extra research today, and EPA suggests that, um, the majority of, uh, bi-economic sector greenhouse gas emissions, its transportation is 30% of the problem, um, industry's 22%, um, electricity, so the creation of electricity, and this is on national levels, 28%, and commercial and residential is 12%. So, um, from a total demand perspective, um, what I'm trying to understand is, if, for example, um, all of the communities on the peninsula who are part of PCE's, um, JPA, Joint Powers Authority, were to adopt aggressive reach codes, and with the proliferation of community choice aggregators, which are similar organizations like PCE, um, tell me a little bit about what is PCE's ability to, um, manage the demand for renewable energy if everything starts to move in this direction very quickly?
Sure. So, um, there are several things there. First, in terms of the emissions inventory, our emissions inventory is naturally different than that of the, uh, that's US, across the US. So in the case of our emissions inventory, it's roughly 60% transportation, 20% buildings, which means, uh, natural gas in buildings. It was until, until PCE's establishment here, roughly 15% out of electricity, and that's been more than cut in half. That 20% that's out of natural gas is actually much larger than it seems, because that doesn't factor what's known as fugitive emissions, which are, uh, emissions that, uh, happen with natural gas drilling, piping, and at the appliance level, so that, and that, those estimates vary, but it's probably somewhere on the order of 50% more than that 20% number, um, indicates. Uh, with regards to the issue of availability of clean energy to address that increased load, um, what we do know is in the near term, we're talking very small amounts of increased load to increase transportation and building electrification. So transportation, which is a lot more than electrifying a building, so if you have an EV, it more or less doubles the, um, electrical use in a home. It depends on the type of home and a bunch of other factors, but, um, PCE has done a, a modeling exercise looking out to 2025 for the 45,000 vehicles, which is roughly double what we have now, uh, and we estimated that that was approximately 3% addition to our load, which is to say very, very small. Um, and even looking farther out, it's, it's also expected to be quite, uh, quite small. Um, so there's that, and then the other factor is that the cost of energy, of renewable energy has been declining substantially. So those factors, um, lead us to have high confidence in the ability to, to support, um, energy for the increased demand associated with both transportation and building electrification. Uh, and I would note one last thing, and that is that PG&E has been, which, of course, PG&E is both the E and the G, right? The natural gas. Uh, PG&E, um, has explicitly come out in support of the building reach codes, including speaking at, uh, at council meetings, offering letters of support, and a letter of support if requested here for San Carlos, um, could be made available. I'm not, I, I don't believe, um, one has been offered, um, here. Um, and part of the reason is that PG&E knows that the cost of natural gas is going to become a big problem because of the declining in use in, um, power generation as well as the end use. So those are important points to consider, um, in terms of where, um, where our energy use is likely to be headed. Thank you.
Adam?
Thank you. Just had one quick clarifying question. Can, um, and I don't know if it's either for Chris or Raphael, but, um, in terms of when we're talking about the reach codes, just so I understand for sure, are we talking about, uh, residential and commercial or just residential?
So the model codes that, um, PCE helped develop with stakeholder input, um, address both residential and commercial. However, in the course of discussions, as local governments have explored what they wish to do, um, some have chosen to focus on residential, um, some have chosen to introduce various exceptions. So there is some variety in terms of the approach, but the model codes, uh, again, that, uh, that PCE, um, is offering do address both segments.
So I had a couple of questions for, um, staff. First one actually is for Greg, so you can, you can relax still. Greg, I wanted to, uh, ask you to talk a little bit about the point you and I were mentioning, talking this afternoon by phone with the, uh, franchise agreement, um, just so the public is aware of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's, it's in the staff report just for reference on page two, which is, uh, page five of your packet. Um, when I look at the, um, maybe it's my unique perspective in dealing with, uh, Line 147 in, in San Bruno, but I, I knew something about this franchise because I had to research it, um, when Line 147 came up. And it's a pretty broad franchise from 1947. Well, almost every city in the state has one that, as part of the regulatory structure that, um, when PG&E, um, and other utilities were expanding the natural gas network, we've granted a franchise to PG&E, um, in exchange for a 2% franchise fee to install natural gas in our streets for the purpose of providing gas to the public. So the question I have that needs to be studied before the council makes a final decision on this is whether or not the, uh, adopting a reach codes is in conflict with the franchise, because if we, to use the strongest type of reach code that's out there banning natural gas, I think would be clearly in direct conflict with the franchise that the city has agreed to, uh, because PG&E, um, under the franchise has a right to deliver gas. Now, there's shades of gray in that, um, that we would want to study to see, um, and I can, obviously, other cities have, have, um, taken different stances on this, and I, I'd like to educate myself on what their thinking was, but that's one issue that I saw. Uh, and then the other was already discussed generally, is the effect on rates and what's the CPUC's authority in, in dealing with a change in the gas infrastructure in the state and how that would affect rates? Because like, they have exclusive jurisdiction over gas, and regulation of gas and electricity in the state of California.
Thank you Greg. Chris, uh, the question I had, uh, for you was prompted by, um, some thinking about, well frankly, the house that I built not too many years ago. Um, I want to assure you that we never actually did any of these things, but there were certain things as we were moving towards the completion of the house that, uh, would have made living there in certain respects easier, not, it would not have been code compliant, and so there's always the discussion with contractors about whether or not, well, we'll wait till after the inspector comes through and signs off, and then we'll go through and, you know, modify something.
Really?
But I assure you, we didn't do any of that thing, but I had to let my dog out through the back door the whole time. Um, so, um, but, and you may have answered my question just with the way you responded there. Um, what I am concerned a little bit about is, I guess to put it this way, i-if we get too far ahead of what the community is willing to do, as opposed to what we think the community should do, in terms of its energy consumption profile, do we not? should do in terms of its energy consumption profile, do we not potentially have a risk where people will, yes, this is a gas-free house, and as soon as it's signed off on, we'll go install a gas water heater or a gas stove or whatever? And maybe that's even riskier than doing it as part of the actual construction process. Just be interested in your sort of expert opinion on that kind of thing.
I would say that there's always a risk of something like that occurring, whether we're talking about reach codes or otherwise, whether it's people that don't like fluorescent or LED lighting in their kitchen and want to put in the old fixtures they found at the antique store or whatever. There is always that potential of folks wanting to, you know, when we sign off a project, going in and altering it to, you know, Exhibit A of that is brand-new homes you see on the market where there's no handrail on the stairs going up. And so they've all been removed, and it's all nice and smooth, but there's supposed to be a handrail there, but it's been removed. So yes, there's always a potential of that in this industry.
And I presume that's part of the kind of overall process that the state is following in setting building codes, because the process for doing that probably involves a much broader cross-section of developers, suppliers, people pushing a particular perspective, legitimately so. But I want to be clear, I'm not at all, you know, a climate change denier. I think that we're going to be very lucky, we don't cook the earth by the time I'm dead. But that's part of the process, I presume, that they do that is actually so that everybody buys into it and marches along together.
Exactly. Yes.
And so therefore, if we get out in front of that, we potentially run the risk of dealing with the consequences of it, like you were talking about.
Yeah, there is a possibility of even overreaching reach code.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? This is, this was a presentation leading to council, potentially for council directions of staff as to whether we want to put something on our agenda-setting thing in the future or study it further or just accept the report and move on and think about it and do one or more of those things later. Laura, pardon me, not Laura, Sarah, I see you have your light on.
Thank you. I had one additional question, actually, that your question made me think about. Is there anyone in staff who could talk about the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan that we're going through and how reach codes could potentially be incorporated into that process? Please?
It looks like there are two people who could speak to it.
Hi, Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to introduce Adam Locar. He is our Sustainability Specialist, who will be in charge of this plan.
Good evening, Adam.
Thanks, Tara. Yeah, Adam Locar, Management Analyst, Sustainability Specialist. So yeah, we will be updating our Climate Mitigation Adaptation Plan all next year. Part of that will be developing a greenhouse gas inventory for San Carlos, setting goals for greenhouse gas reductions, and identifying specific measures that we can take to reduce our emissions. So part of that process, we could certainly look at reach codes and compare them to other mitigation measures, kind of looking at co-benefits of each measure, and then also looking at it through the lens of adaptation and seeing how these measures affect our ability to adapt to climate change at the same time.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Adam. So what's the council's pleasure? What direction are we giving staff, if any? Ron? Chair Olbert, I want to commend everybody that spoke. I want to thank Rafael and for his presentation, and I think we have a ways to go. My feeling is I'm all for accepting the report, but I think we probably ought to move on for the moment. Okay. I echo Ron's comments, by the way. I do appreciate all the effort, not only in the meeting tonight, but I met with a number of you individually, as you know, before this, and that was very helpful, and I very much appreciate it. So any other or different perspective?
I want to thank everyone for coming out as well. So I guess I want to clarify, so it sounds like there's an opportunity when we're doing the Climate Action Program to look at this. And I know, I mean, for me, I'd like to, we have a retreat, mini-retreat coming up in a couple of weeks where I'd like to be able to try to maybe have a further discussion about this and spend a little time on, and maybe have it agendized for that mini-retreat, I think is on December 6th, so we can potentially get a little more detail about what the city's plans are and maybe have a longer discussion, because I know we have a busy agenda tonight.
That's fine. Jeff, did you make a note of that?
Yep, we can make sure it makes the list.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. Yeah, I echo Adam's suggestion. Again, this is helpful. I did meet with members of the community that provided me with some really good education. It's a very complex issue. And this in light of also recent events with the PG&E power shutdown, we did get some additional concerns with respect to climate issues in our community. So I think the fact that we have the Climate Mitigation Adaptation Plan in the works and, you know, looking at kind of the totality of things that we can do to address greenhouse gas emissions, I think is a good, to reduce those, is kind of a right step. So I like the idea of bringing, discussing at the mini-retreat as well.
All right. And that's what we will do. Thank you, everybody, again, for who came tonight. Next item on the agenda is Item 5, Public Comment. This is for items not on the agenda. As you just saw, for items that are on the agenda, we give people an opportunity to comment on that item by item as they come up. We'll give people a few minutes to clear the room. But the first speaker is Avnet Avnit Basri. Assuming I got your name even roughly correct.
What is this topic?
This is a public comment, not on the agenda.
All righty.
Good evening, Avnit.
Hi. All right. My name's Avnit. I'm here representing Hip Housing. Hip Housing has been receiving funding support from the City of San Carlos since 1995. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Chair and all the members of the City of San Carlos for your continued support of our organization. As a token of our appreciation and a reminder of our partnership throughout the year, I'd like to present the council with Hip Housing's new 2020 calendar, which, fun fact, it was actually printed in the City of San Carlos. So yeah, this is the 19th calendar Hip Housing has created, filled with the information on Hip Housing's affordable housing programs and children's artwork from kindergarten through 5th grade. And today, we have a winner from the City of San Carlos who has drawn this beautiful picture about what home means to her. So Natalie, would you like to?
Home means safe to me. It's where my family, heart, food, and all the important things in life reside. Wherever I go, I always have my home in my heart. It's like a box where everything special to me is inside.
That was very nice. Thank you. May I ask which month was?
Month of April.
Well, you know, I'm sitting next to somebody who will probably be mayor during the month of April. I think we might want to do some recognition since that's a San Carlos picture. I'll leave that to you.
That'd be adorable. Thank you so much for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Beautiful picture. I will just say, as an alum of the Hip Housing Board, I look forward to my calendar every year because it goes up on my office. So, thank you. Next up is John Hoffman.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, San Carlos is in the very fortunate position of having a significant surplus, and it looks as if that good fortune may continue for at least another year. I would ask you to consider returning some of that to the people who paid it originally, the ratepayers, the taxpayers. I don't have a particular recommendation as to how you do that, but I think five clever people can come up with something, and I would ask you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And last up, if anybody else wants to address the council, and I'm not on the agenda, please fill out a card and give it to Crystal, is Ben Fuller. Good evening, Ben.
Hello, everybody. A lot of people to greet here. We've got our city manager, city attorney, city clerk. We have three not-so-new council members anymore, and then we got Ron and Mark. And also, we have the police in the room. Thank you, guys, for coming as well. I wanted to say, this is a great job. Years ago, this city was actually kind of a laughingstock with our budget. I mean, Jeff came in, you guys have really turned things around, you did some controversial outsourcing moves, but it really paid off, and we're in way better shape now. And you got $9 million, so just fantastic job. We've got money coming in from the hotel, all that good stuff. I was told you bought your home by the tracks, and we've seen a lot of great development there now. San Carlos Transit Village is looking good. You guys did another good job on that. We all compromised, worked together. And now we have this situation in the hills with wildfire, and I just want to ask you guys, we have this big housing problem in San Carlos. We all got to work together. Is there any way that when we start spending money to mitigate the wildfire risk, we can increase a little density up there as well? Because everybody, like this girl who just made this presentation, we all need a place to live, and we all should bear our fair share. I want to also mention the $9 million. So we got $9 million. Does anybody know who it was who sold Pulgas Creek? Who was it? Jeff, do you know who sold our creek to L3 and Kelly Moore? Somebody sold the creek, right?
I don't, I don't know that the creek was ever sold specifically. It might have always just been part of those parcels.
Okay, so, I mean, because I go to Pet Boys all the time, I see people throwing car parts in there, throwing cigarettes in there. Is that the kind of scene we want to have going in San Carlos? So I just wanted to bring that up. Let's buy our creek back. We should have our creek. A couple other things I want to mention. The trees are going in along the berm. It looks fantastic. We still got a couple areas in the berm to get to, so I just wanted to remind everyone, we got 40 more trees, and we also got to intersperse some trees within those poplars behind Building 8. Mark and I have had a little bit of communication, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they're moving garbage outside of Building 8, and there's a huge oil spill that's happened literally on our brand-new sidewalk, so.
Can you move towards wrapping up, please?
And finally, I want to mention pedestrian investment. So remember, we got this really dangerous situation on El Camino and Holly? So I just want to remind you guys, let's find a safer way to get across here. We've got a lot of money now. Let's do a study. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is Council Communications and Announcements of a hopefully somewhat brief nature. Is there anybody who has anything to say? Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. Very briefly, I just wanted to let the public know that Sam Trans is currently analyzing all of its routes. It's looking at routes that are working well and routes that need improvement, and this process will result in a new bus system in 2021. So there is a survey online, it's called Reimagine Sam Trans, and the website is reimagine samtrans.com. So I know that we have schoolchildren that ride the Sam Trans bus to school, and I've heard from seniors that they'd like to see a bus route through town. So this is our chance to weigh in, and I would encourage the public to do that. And they also do presentations, which I will bring back in agenda-setting later. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Ron? Thank you, Mark. Just a couple things. We had an organizational workshop for Caltrain last Thursday over in Half Country Bay, and a lot of people may not realize it, but Caltrain is run by the San Mateo County Transit Authority, which also runs Sam Trans, the bus system. It also operates the Transit Authority. The Board of Caltrain is made up of members from three counties. San Francisco has three members, San Mateo County has three members, of which I'm one, and Santa Clara County has three members. And we spent a good, the good part of the day talking about the future of Caltrain and how that organization is going to look in two years, five years, 10 years. There are some people that would like to see Caltrain become part of a regional transportation authority, which is going to be discussed. And also to let you know that there is a potential ballot measure being created by Faster Bay Area to impose a 1-cent sales tax on all nine counties, and all the money would go toward transit programs, which would include a dedicated funding source for Caltrain, which, by the way, has never had one and always operates at a deficit. Anyway, it was a very productive morning, and we had a lot of things discussed, and just look for some more news about Caltrain in the future. Thank you. Ron and Laura, anything to, okay? Crystal, would you mind popping up the PowerPoint I gave you? I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make that are sparked by something that I think a speaker tonight referenced. It's a news report I heard about the other day about a pretty significant commercial development update. Let's see. Ah, that's how you turn it on. So this has to do with the L3 Kelly Moore properties that were bought by Alexandria in two different transactions. They now own both of them, basically the land along Britton Avenue between industrial and Old County. There's a couple of exceptions to that, but it's about 20 acres, as I recall. And as I said, I learned about this from a reporter who asked me if I had any opinion or reaction to it, and I had to admit that I didn't know anything about it. So my first request here, before I get into a couple of other comments, is a staff request, which, at least speaking for myself, I would like to be notified whenever there's a significant change in any kind of commercial or multifamily residential project, a filing, or in this case, it was a pre-application filing that had some significant information, and I just felt a little bit surprised, and I'd rather not be surprised, particularly because this is a topic I've talked about a lot in the last year. The clock is ticking. Alexandria's pre-approval submission package has asked for, now, this is above, I believe, what it's zoned for, but they've asked to get approval for a project that would have 1.6 million square feet of new commercial development. That, coupled with all the other things that are going on and are expected to go on in that little biotech gold chair area, will increase the total amount of commercial space in San Carlos by 184%. And that's, you know, the million-four that we have today is about a century's worth of effort. A few years is going to see it jump up enormously. In terms of employee impact, we have roughly, if I remember the numbers that Al gave me earlier this year, we have roughly about 14,000 jobs in San Carlos. A reasonable estimate of direct employment and carry-on employment for restaurants and dry cleaners and whatnot that big, big commercial increases have as impact on the community shows that our employment base is going to go up by about 56% from these projects. And these are not the only projects that could be coming forward in San Carlos. There are other big chunks of land that could very easily be flipped and turned into yet more commercial development. This is likely kicking off the greatest cycle of commercial development in our history. Certainly, this project, as far as I know, is the single biggest project in San Carlos' And that causes me to raise a few questions that I really think we need to consider, and that is, we are currently operating under a set of rules, the general plan, that we're balancing of development and quality of life issues that was made about 10 years ago. And the question is, is that still what we want to do today? Are those past choices and balances still what we want to do today? And I would submit to you that the reality of what we're dealing with is, in fact, far different from what I like to call the median plan. It's not like the plan didn't contemplate that this, all this development could take place, but that was not the expectation. The expectation that was the development would be more measured than this. Everybody always likes upsides, but no plan in the world is based solely on upsides. But we are operating in kind of the total upside world. When things end up being either significantly better or significantly worse than what you sort of thought they were going to be, I really think that means that you ought to be raising questions about whether the plan that you're operating under is still producing what the community wants. That's a general plan review and amendment, at least in part of the general plan. It's not something that's on the radar that's going to happen right now, which means we're just going to continue to barrel forward with our existing general plan. And that's where the, all that additional office space and stuff comes from. So I just want people to be aware of that and to be thinking about that, because it's a very significant set of changes that are going to be impacting the community. All right. Anybody else have any comments? Then we will move on to the Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar items are ones that are, oh, Adam, did you?
No, sorry, I was waiting for Consent Calendar.
Okay, sorry. Consent Calendar items are ones that are usually enacted en masse without discussion by the council, although any council member can ask to have an item removed and dealt with separately. Is there a motion to enact the Consent Calendar? Is there a motion to enact the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull something from the consent calendar.
Or to pull something from the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 7J, please.
I'd like to pull 7J, okay? All right, we will deal with that separately. Is there anything else that somebody would like pulled to address separately? Or if not, is somebody interested in making a motion?
Chair, I will move to approve City Council consent calendar items A through I and adopt and item K, adopting ordinance number 1557. An ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos adopting a zoning district map amendment and to correctly designate the existing property at 125 Wingate Avenue, APN 050-321-280, a single-family residential RS6 from open space. And item L, adopting ordinance number 1558, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos adopting a zoning district boundary map amendment for the property located at 252 Club Drive, APN 049050050, to allow for pre-zoning of the property to RS3, single-family, low-density.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Chair O'Bea?
Yes. Consent calendar with item J removed passes. Unless the DIAS objects, I think I'd like to just deal with this immediately. 7J, okay. Adam?
Um... Is it...
Actually, pardon me. Pardon me. We're dealing with item 7J, authorize the mayor to submit a letter, which is part of the staff package, to Governor Gavin Newsom regarding California moving away from PG&E as an energy provider. Sorry, Adam.
Thank you. So I was hoping, because I think at the last minute I asked that we can get some sort of presentation about kind of what this might look like before we were to send a letter. And I understand some communities have done that already. So I don't have an issue in concept, and I also have some concerns that I want to talk about after Tara's presentation, just about the letter itself.
Tara?
Thank you. Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. At the request of council, at the last council meeting, we're bringing forward a draft letter to the governor regarding the state moving away from PG&E as an energy provider. Thank you. Okay, so quick background. PG&E serves about 16 million people across 70,000 square miles of the state, primarily in the north, with some in the central part of the state. PG&E generates both electricity and natural gas and distributes both through its network of overhead lines, poles, towers, and underground facilities. PG&E is in some financial trouble, filing for bankruptcy earlier this year due to the liability associated with its equipment causing wildfires. PG&E established a public safety power shutdown program, which we refer to as PSPS, to reduce the risk of wildfires caused by its equipment shutting off, by shutting off the power. As part of this program, PG&E monitors the weather and determines when a shutdown's needed. Two such events occurred in October, which impacted San Carlos, and then one smaller one occurred in November that impacted parts of the North Bay. These shutdowns have significant impacts on PG&E customers and the communities where they occur, and the CPUC is currently investigating these shutdowns. So just to give you an idea, there are some alternatives to PG&E that are already in place. May not make sense for San Carlos, but I just wanted to bring you up to date on these. Some larger cities have taken over power distributions themselves. This includes Sacramento, Palo Alto, and Los Angeles. San Francisco recently was turned down by PG&E in its attempt to take over the distribution. And San Jose is looking into it. Community choice aggregators, such as Peninsula Clean Energy here in San Mateo County, they purchase cleaner electricity and then use PG&E, their distribution lines, to deliver it to their customers. So because of all that's going on with PG&E over the last year and the fact that wildfires are being caused by their equipment, more and more communities are looking at alternates to PG&E. Earlier this year, the City of San Jose and six other local energy providers, including PCE, asked the CPUC to remove PG&E from the business of electrical generation and to make them just one of distribution, so that it can focus on maintaining its poles and wires to deliver electricity safely and reliably, which is one of its missions. And then, very recently, on November 4th, 22 mayors and county leaders, including two here in San Mateo County, asked the CPUC to replace the investor-owned PG&E with a customer-owned power company by restructuring PG&E. And finally, Governor Newsom suggested that the CPUC consider allowing the state to take over the utility. These are all very preliminary. It's impossible to estimate at this time what the cost may be. It really will depend on the scope and what is decided. But one of the things to keep in mind is if anyone takes over the infrastructure that PG&E has in place, there's a great deal of work that needs to take place to bring it up to par, make it safe. So the recommendation this evening is to discuss authorizing the chair to submit a letter to the governor suggesting that the state looked at opting out of PG&E as a utility serving much of the state, including the Bay Area and San Carlos. The draft letter attached to the staff report was based on statements made by Governor Newsom and a letter he wrote to the CPUC earlier this year in relation to the first PSPS. And that was October 14th. So you'll notice that the language is fairly strong. It could be revised by council. There's also an alternative that I did not include in the staff report, and that is to either submit a letter similar to what's attached, that the 22 leaders sent to the CPUC, or to just show support for that letter and then copy the governor. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Tara.
Thank you, Tara. So I guess my, I guess, and Tara, thank you for sharing that and offering sort of the other suggestion. I think from my end, in reading the letter that we had drafted, I was concerned that it was, I guess there are a couple lines, at least one line I didn't like, which was sort of the line talking about proven again and again to be dishonest, corrupt, and inept. I guess, I mean, I'm sure there are things at PG&E that are not going well, but there are, I'm sure, thousands and tens of thousands of people there who are working and really doing their best to try to do the right thing for PG&E. And so to me, it seems like we're blaming every, they sort of, we're blaming the whole room for the problem of maybe some leadership at the top. And so I was concerned it's sort of taking that type of tone with the letter. I actually liked the tone of the letter from the mayors that went, the 22, better. So, but, so I would be comfortable if we can remove that one line and send our letter or if we want to send the mayor's letter or, and maybe just ask to sign on to it or something along those lines.
Other reactions? Thoughts?
Yeah, I appreciate Adam's concern. I mean, one of the dialogues that we had, for example, at Peninsula Clean Energy last week, we talked about this, and they're going to be monitoring this dialogue as it moves through, is just to be mindful that, you know, there's thousands of workers there who are doing, you know, good work and not the people who were making the decision. So maybe some softer language around that to make that distinction, that, you know, we're concerned about the management and the decisions that the management is making and not so much PG&E as a whole.
Does, Tara, do you have a copy of the letter that you can put up on the screen?
Do I?
Or Crystal? Not sure. If not...
Out of my presentation.
Yes?
Yeah, it's a letter in your packet. We do not have the ability to put it on the screen. Is that right?
Solely for the purposes of discussion, since I understand the sentence that Adam and maybe Laura, I mean, I'm not saying other people don't have other concerns about other parts of this. What if we changed it to say PG&E's leadership? I understand the point about not, you know, not trying to taint every single member of the organization.
And then, let me ask you one. So I guess, I just think corrupt is a pretty harsh word to put in there. And I mean, if there's been proven, charged corruption, then I think that's one thing. But to me, to use the word corrupt is pretty harsh to do.
I...
It's an accusation, and I'm concerned about making those kind of accusations.
Actually, Tara, where did that language come from?
In the case of corruption, I took these words from a variety of statements that the governor made, as well as a letter he wrote.
From the governor, okay.
Right, so I'd have to actually go back and find out which statement it was.
That answers the question. I mean, it's, maybe he was just speaking out of anger or something, but it, he would hardly be surprised if we echoed his own words back at him. Personally, I don't really have a strong problem if we drop the word corrupt and just say PG&E's leadership is proven again and again to be dishonest and inept. And I could probably be argued out of even including that sentence at all. I personally, however, actually do believe that, based on my experience going through line 147 and dealing with them in a number of other circumstances.
In my mind, it's really the inability to provide safe and reliable energy. I mean, that's the issue. And maybe if we were to frame it that way, we're just drop the line altogether.
I'd be comfortable with Laura's approach or to drop it altogether.
Sarah and Ron, what do you think?
I agree with Laura. I think there's a better way to say it. You know, the point is, is that we need to move away. I mean, the point of the letter is asking the governor to move away from PG&E. And I think there's, I think what, the way Laura phrased it is really a better way.
Why don't we, for the sake of simplicity, why don't we just drop the sentence? Because that's an amendment.
That too.
That's an amendment we can do here, and then we don't have to bring it back again.
Well, if you're going to drop that sentence, I'd drop the next one, too. I don't know. I mean, because that's sort of is tied with the inept and corrupt and inept dishonest line. If you're going to drop one, drop them both.
All right. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion amending the letter that we're going to approve?
Oh, I think that you, Adam. I move to, let me just see what we got here. Promise you I'll find this. I move to authorize the mayor, chair, to submit a, the amended letter to Governor Gavin Newsom regarding California moving away from PG&E as an energy provider.
I'll second.
With the amendments?
With the amendments to drop the lines...
Or drop the last two sentences.
Drop the last two sentences of the third paragraph.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or comment?
One question, one clarifying question. In the first line, would you like it to say the City of San Carlos joins other communities in the state in supporting our efforts to hold PG&E leadership accountable? Okay.
And to amend the first sentence to add the word leadership after PG&E.
Okay. Sarah, do you accept that change to the motion?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
All right. Amended the letter authorization passes. That brings us to item 8A, report to the city council on the state of our streets. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Sheriff, City Councilmember Steven Machida, Public Affairs Director. So I'm here tonight to ask you to do a quick presentation on our state of the streets within our community. So ours is a state of the street, basically, or what we refer to as a pavement management program, or PMP. Basically, it's a process through our MTC that has developed a program to actually assist to score our streets or the conditions of our streets. So basically, the program looks at, does some field inspections, looks at overall cities, pavement management software. And then, after the inspection, it looks at the update of the pavement conditions of each street, and then makes recommendations or collects the data and makes a recommendation to optimize pavement expenditure. So a systematic process is used to oversee the maintain of the existing streets. So basically, as I mentioned, Streetsaver will look at the, they measure the conditions of the street, and they track the maintenance of what we have done over the course of time, and then implement various strategies based on the lifecycle costs, whatever needs it tends, we need to do, and then kind of our future budget projections of what we need to spend on those streets. And so based on that, it calculates kind of what we should be doing via the program Streetsaver. So over these next few slides, basically, these are the parameters that Streetsaver use to make that determination of how we should spend our money in regards to street rehabilitation. So the streets are classified in three different categories or classifications. The arterial typically be like San Carlos Avenue, collector would be like Britton Avenue, and then residential local streets are those are the streets that essentially kind of front the residential homes. So they, basically, arterial, collector, and residential basically handles kind of trip capacities of high, kind of low or moderate, and then low. And then arterials kind of handle trip volumes between 15,000 to $50,000, 50,000 vehicles per day. Collectors 5,000 to 15,000, and then local or residential streets from about 1,000 to 5,000 trips per day. Additionally, it looks at the number of segments. And so these are just segments of roads that are used in the program to make a determination. So it's based on kind of the total segments of arterials, collectors, and local streets. Kind of the centerline miles, so that's basically the center of the street, how long those segments are. And then it also needs to look at total lane miles. So occasionally, you'll have like two lanes in each direction, so it wants to calculate the number of lanes that you have, because obviously, there's going to be double the number of lane miles if you use it that way versus just calculating the street, the centerline, centerline miles. So over these next few slides that you're going to see, you're going to see some of this distressed type of failures that we may see throughout our streets. So the first one, probably all familiar with, are kind of alligator cracking. And basically, it's called that, as you can imagine, because it looks like the skin of the alligator. Then you also, in the lower right-hand corner, you have the block cracking. So as you can see, there's kind of little rectangular segments where the pavement cracks over time. And a lot of this is just based on kind of older pavement. It's really kind of lost some, it's emulsions or oils, and it's just starting to fail. It's becoming more brittle, if you will. These next sets are kind of pavement distress types. One is on the upper left-hand corner, distortion. So basically, as you can see, the little cracking there, that might be a result of perhaps some tree roots or just differential sediment in the pavement itself. And then on the lower right-hand side, it's the longitudinal trevers cracking. And that's a little bit different than the block cracking that you saw earlier. And these are just kind of long cracks along the segment. It really doesn't branch out sideways, but it's just along the centerline of the pavement. And then we all know the upper left-hand is the kind of patching and utility cuts. Typically, you see that after PG&E or the phone service goes in, Comcast goes in, you might see these street cuts. The lower right-hand corner is the running and depression. So basically, as you can see, we have a level. And as you can see, there's probably about an inch deflection, if you will. And that's basically, again, it might be some settlement within the pavement itself or it just in general, it could be just bad, you know, bad pavement job. This is, the upper left-hand corner is kind of weathering. Basically, this pavement, you know, it's still not failed. It just looks old. It's probably not, doesn't ride as smooth as before, but, and it's still functional, but it's just kind of gotten old. It's, you know, basically, the asphalt or the emulsion has probably left the asphalt itself. And the lower right-hand photo is kind of what they call raveling. And again, this is not quite totally failed, but basically, you could see maybe a little bit more of the asphalt or the aggregate kind of exposed. You might have some indentation. There's really no cracking, per se, but it's really still a rough ride, but it really hasn't failed, but it's about to fail. So we talk about the PCI or Pavement Condition Index. And basically, it's a scale that we use from zero to 100, where zero is, basically, it means that the street has totally failed. It's just, there's no base, there's nothing there to really support vehicle travel. And the 100 score is essentially a brand-new street. So basically, we all know what a brand-new street looks like. So that's kind of the two extremes of the scale itself. And so the PCI is calculated using the Streetsaver. It's based, as I mentioned earlier, MTC had developed it, and it's part of the algorithm that kind of looks at the condition of the street, what we have done or what had been done to the street. So if there was some kind of patching, if there were some additional stress, do we have potholes, are some utility cuts, et cetera? And it takes into that category or that analysis to make a determination on how to score that particular street. So in... So in, so, you know, for us to do, we actually hired AMS Consulting actually to do the field work, and they actually did the, kind of made the evaluation of our streets. And so, they actually made a conditional categories. They actually scored our streets between conditions 1 through 5, where condition 1 is very good, it has PCI of 70 to 100. And that's kind of the area that we would love to see all our streets kind of be in. And then conditions 2 and 3, basically, that's fair to at-risk. That's an area where, you know, certainly it's acceptable, and it is something that, you know, we try to kind of work through, and we try to make, get us closer towards a 70, PCI of 70, but it's still functional. And then conditions 4 and 5, basically, are poor or poor to fail. Condition 4 is 25 to 50, and, you know, those are the areas, you know, it's about to fail. And then obviously, condition 5 is when failed. So if you could look at the percentages, you know, approximately between condition 1 and condition 2 and 3, we have about 70% of our street are within those two ranges, and the other 30% are actually kind of below or at poor, or, you know, have, in the process of being failed. So here's kind of some more photos, and basically, you know, we're gonna see the green, yellow, and orange again. But as you can see, to the left is, basically, that's a failed street. Basically, all the, you know, pavement is pretty much gone, we're down to base rock, if there is any base rock. As you go left to right, you start seeing the second photo, it's kind of that raveling of the alligator cracking, but this is probably a little bit more severe than alligator cracking, because you can actually see gaps between the pavement itself. Third photo to the left is actually, it's at-risk. It's probably where, you know, 20%, of our roads are. The little streaks that you see in the line, you may think that's a crack, but actually, that's a treatment system that we use, what they call a crack sealant. And basically, we use, put emulsion down to kind of seal any cracks that might have, that are shown or exposed. And that's really to prevent water from getting into the pavement. And basically, I forgot to mention that, you know, the biggest problem with any type of street that we face, the biggest culprit of street failure is water. And so, that can come from, obviously, the rain, if any kind of storm. It actually, you know, when we really don't think about it, but also any kind of leaks from the water main, underground water, groundwater that might seep up. And whenever water attacks to the base of the street, it actually starts the process of the failure of the street. So whatever you do, or what we can do to actually completely address rainwater or any water on the surface or below the surface, that's what we need to do to kind of keep our streets intact. And then the last photo is kind of the good direction, and that's, you know, pretty much a clean street. There's no cuts, there's no patching, there's no potholes. So this is the typical S-curve of kind of the street life of a particular street. And as I mentioned, you know, we're gonna see green, yellow, orange, and red. You know, we want to be in that green factor, and so that's a category 1, and that's, you know, probably very good to excellent. But as you can see, that little, the black line, this kind of little S-curve. And so, as you kind of go over the life of the road, as you go from 0 to 10, it's kind of a shallow drop from 0 to 10. But once you get to about approximately year 15, 14, 15, now all of a sudden, that curve starts to become more vertical. And that's where, essentially, where, you know, potentially, you can have some really quick failures of the street itself. Basically, the street has reached approximately 75 years or use of its life at year 15. And so, if you really don't do any work from that point on, you could really lose the street very, very quickly. You're gonna see more potholes, and more failures of the street. So I wanted to point that out, because that vertical, that's the area that we try to stay out of as best we can, because once you enter that vertical line, that's when you could really start seeing street failures much, much, much faster. Here's just kind of the legend of a map that I'm gonna show you next, but again, it's the green, yellow, orange, and red. So this map, and this was really just kind of an illustration of the city, all the city streets. So as you mentioned earlier, I had mentioned that we have just under 50% of all the streets within our cities as, you know, at PCI 70 or greater. And then the yellow portions are a little over 20%. But again, what I wanted to show you here is, you know, basically, we have a whole rainbow of colors around our community, so that we don't have any one particular area that, you know, has better than the others. But obviously, what we would like to do is kind of keep it in the green and yellow, if you can, and try to stay away from the red. So this is a report, this is a graph that we got out of a report. And basically, you know, probably for the last five years or so, we have always maintained right around 60, 62 to 65. And so, basically, you know, whatever we're doing, we're just kind of maintaining our current level of street PCI. So, you know, it's probably in the good area, if you will. You know, sure, could we do better? Certainly, there's always room to do better. This is kind of another chart that I kind of, you know, wanted to show you. Basically, as I mentioned earlier, here we have arterials, some of our better streets. Their PCI of 70. And that's kind of, 70 is kind of the threshold that most cities like to use. So this is what we try, to always strive to reach PCI of our streets of 70. Our collector streets, unfortunately, a little bit lower, 56, and then our residential are at 60. And then this is the PCI comparison of all the kind of local streets. And so, we're, as you can see, highlighted in the yellow bar or orange bar, we're at 63. And so, some of our neighbors, like Belmont, 56, Redwood City is actually at 75, Samhail's at 75, so a little bit higher. So again, I think, you know, what I mentioned earlier, you know, we try to strive for is PCI of 70. Currently, San Francisco Bay area is, as you can see in the red bars, about 67. So here's this graph once again, you know, you've seen earlier. And so, this has a little bit more information. So this is what we try to do as far as our maintenance. So basically, in the green area, or PCI of 70, 100, we try to do some light maintenance, and that essentially is kind of the slurry seal. But as you kind of approach that vertical line, as I mentioned to you, that's when some of the heavier maintenance needs to happen. So we could do some overlays, it could be a reconstruction of the street. But as you get towards the bottom of the S, you know, that's when it becomes really necessary to do either the heavy rehabilitation or complete reconstruction of the street. So as I mentioned, you know, you want to try to stay off that vertical edge as much as possible, but that also means you still have to do some continual maintenance throughout the life of the streets themselves. And this is kind of another table, I probably won't go through it, but you have the excellent, very good, good, poor, and very poor. 90 to 100 is excellent, very good, 70 to 89, good, and, you know, so on and so forth. More pictures of maintenance treatments that are very good. This looks like it's a slurry seal, so basically, it's a fresh coat, so it looks very clean. Nothing's on there just yet. But basically, it is a, you know, quick slurry that would have some gravel on top. This next is a maintenance treatment where there's good to poor. Basically, this could be a, they call it mill and fill, where we actually grind down some of the streets and then do an overlay of asphalt, kind of a thin layer, could be an inch to an inch and a half. And so, that's a little bit more expensive than that slurry seal. It takes a little bit of time and a little bit more effort than a slurry seal. And then lastly, this is kind of complete reconstruction, and I just want to let you know, this is not one of our street, but this is something that we, you know, I wanted to show you a comparison, so this is nothing that we have in town here. But basically, as you can see, it's a major reconstruction where they're actually removing a lot of some of the old asphalt, and actually having to dig up some of the base rock and then start all over. So this chart I wanted to show you is, you know, we're currently kind of in that blue line, if you will. And so, we currently have a budget of about $9 million over a five-year period. So that's about $1.8 million a year that we spend. And so, as you can see, you know, it's always gonna hover around 63, kind of the mid-60s, if you will. So, and the reason why it hovers is because over the course of time, as you spend to do your upgrades or rehab, you know, as there are other streets in your inventory that actually have kind of aged, and over time, if you don't catch it right, they tend to get worse over time, obviously get worse over time. And if you don't catch the right streets or do the right streets, sometimes that can have a bigger impact on your overall PCI score. Additionally, I think we also want to kind of mention that, you know, what we're finding is street rehabilitation, although there is some scientific background, a lot of it is kind of art, to decide which streets are actually going to be done. And in many cases, what we find is, we have to perhaps delay certain streets. For instance, if we know we're gonna have a major utility going in, say, for instance, we have a sewer project that we're going in, that just perhaps is a little bit offset. Maybe this one pretty good street is ready to actually be done, had street rehab done, but we're scheduled to do a major sewer project next year. So rather than do the street and then cut the street up the following year, we may wait for that project, that sewer project to go on before we actually do the street itself. Or in other cases, we may actually have, you know, perhaps some new development that might be going in that will have them to obviously do the frontage, but we may want to hold back on some of the work that we're gonna do leading up to the project. So a lot of it really depends on the specific timing and what other projects are around us. So back to this graph, we also show a kind of a green line. And basically, that green line is, you know, kind of the optimal kind of spending pattern of our total street inventory. And essentially, that is like $55 million over the next five years, so essentially, $11 million a year. So that would get us, you know, pretty much past the, or closer to the 80, PCI of 80, which obviously, if we were to get there, that would be, you know, great. That'd be quite fantastic, we have very nice streets. However, I want to be caution you that, you know, $11 million, that's obviously quite a bit of money, and we would still have to spend that over this. And even if you do spend that $11 million over the five years, you still have to continue to spend more money, because you have to maintain the streets, you know, to keep that PCI level, or keep the streets at that level. So it is something that, you know, we want to try to kind of find a balance where we need to spend the money to kind of increase the capacity of our street, or to continue the street level of what we want. However, we don't want to go too high, where we're constantly spending a lot more money on our street rehab. So just a few more slides. So basically, as I mentioned, the current city's project over the next five years is $9 million. Again, that equates to about $1.8 million a year. You know, we have various funding sources like SB1, I think there's Measure W, where I think for SB1, we're scheduled a little over 500, or a little under 530,000. And that really is only for kind of, you know, the street rehab, so. Although, it's a chunk of money that we can use, it's, you know, really not quite enough to kind of put us over, or actually do a whole lot of changes to our PCI of our city inventory. I think I mentioned earlier, as we continue to spend out of $9 million over the next five years, or about $1.8 to $2 million, our PCI of the streets will remain at 63. And then, as I stated earlier, for us to really have a significant impact, we would probably need to spend about $11 million a year over the next five years. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Steve. I don't have any cards from anybody, but is there somebody who wishes to address the council on this item?
Yes.
If you'd please step forward, and if you could fill out a card after you speak, and give it to Crystal, I'd appreciate it.
I wasn't prepared to say this, but our friend here, I didn't know he was gonna get up and speak. Hey, Harrowfoot, City Council. My name is Lou Boris. I live on Carmelita Drive, Creekside of Carmelita Drive. I've lived there for 54 years. I've lived there for 54 years. The street has never been paved. It's been patched and patched, it's like a roller coaster. We've talked to our friend here. He knows the condition of the street. The biggest problem is, all the water comes down Corollaries, turns a corner, comes down Carmelita Drive, comes down right to my corner of my driveway, which is the only drop on Carmelita Drive that comes down, takes all that water from Corollaries, right into my garage. Now, I put two drains in there, I made the driveway sloped, I put a gutter in front of the driveway, but I still get it. I put, well, the Dachish here and ourselves, we have to put sandbags in the street there to keep the water from jumping, because it comes down both sides there, and it hits one side and it just jumps over that grate, and it just comes right down the driveway. So, I mean, I really, I don't know how many streets in San Carlos have that kind of a problem, or lived with it for 54 years, but we'd like some relief. That's all I have to say on this. Thank you.
And if you could fill out a card at your convenience and give it to Crystal, that'd be great. The card's over in the corner. So I know there are a number of questions from the dais, Steve, but perhaps you could start by just giving us some feedback or perspectives on the lower portion of Carmelita.
So, yes, I spoke to Mr. Boris in regards to the kind of storm drain. So I know we are looking at, in fact, we actually had proposed to actually redo, to actually repave the street, I believe it was not this year, but actually last year. However, as part of the outreach that we did for the, for the community, Mr. Boris had really felt very strongly that it wouldn't do any good if we were to repave the street and really not address the storm drain issues that he had, you know, or the issues that he talked about. So I know I've spoke to my staff here recent, or during that time, as well as currently, and, you know, we're looking at some different alternatives to, you know, perhaps address some of the things. And so, in fact, we were able to move forward and address some of the concerns that he has. We would probably re-enroll his, the street Carmelita into the whole street rehabilitation program that we have.
Is some of the things that staff is looking at, do they involve modifying the way the storm drain is operating, or putting a catchment basement, basin in, or?
Certain, that is kind of the options that we're looking at, yes.
Okay. For what it's worth, I know when the next budget cycle comes up, I wouldn't mind seeing some reference to that. So we'll get to that. Adam?
Thank you. Steve, thanks for the presentation. Can you, so, interesting to discuss, because we've got, you know, we're gonna have a discussion on surplus later on, and in terms of the paving, so if you were to get to 11 million, I'm just curious about sort of the capacity from your end, from your staff, to be able to, if we were to say, yes, let's put a little bit more in there. I don't know that we need to get to the 80s number, but, you know, somewhere in between, let's say we did an extra $1 million or something. Is there capacity to manage that from your staff? I'd be, just want to understand kind of where that is.
Yes. You know, my staff is kind of willing, prepared to do this. Certainly, this is something that, you know, they want to do. In fact, although this year, we, our paving program actually went a little bit late, we are actually going to kind of complete the paving job prior to the rains. And as you know, rains are gonna be starting here within the next couple of days, and so they are paved. So what we're doing now is actually striping. So in regards to actually, does my staff have the capacity? You know, they will. You know, my staff is still very young, but they're learning, they're very quick learners, and, you know, they're very anxious to kind of do a lot of these projects. And what we don't have, if we don't have that capacity, certainly, I see the ability to use our on-call consultants, you know, to help do design and help kind of shepherd this project.
Great, thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Stephen, for the presentation, and I appreciate you taking the time to put all this information together for us. I have two questions. When a street gets repaved, do, does staff check to see if the sewer laterals that the city is responsible for, the ones that run under the street, if those are all up to par before the street? Because I'm wondering if the street gets paved and then someone remodels, and the city says, oh, we need to come in, and, you know, you need to redo your line, and now we're gonna redo it, and we carve up the brand-new road.
So typically, what we do try to do is, obviously, if we know we have laterals that, for instance, the lower laterals, and that's typically the laterals that the city normally maintains, what we do try to is, we kind of make a query to our maintenance staff to find out if, you know, how often they have actually had to go out there to either clean flush or do any kind of repair. And we try to address those beforehand. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we try to adjust our schedule accordingly, you know, so that we do all the underground work, if you will, prior to we doing the paving of the street. I can't say we're always successful, and then there have been certain instances where, you know, we thought we were fine, but we only find once a problem came up that we actually had to. actually had to open up the street as a result of emergency. So I can't say we're perfect, but, you know, we do try to kind of predict or try to look in advance before we actually do the street paving.
And Public Works is tracking the lines that are in need of rehabilitation, right?
Yes, yes.
So then you just kind of cross-reference and see?
Right. So we actually have two projects, one, or actually three projects. We have the ones that we know, the sewer rains that we actually have to repair because there are problems. But then we have another kind of on-call, you know, contract that actually looks at if we find that they're just chronic problems, but, you know, they're not part of the main contract, if you will. So we're able to have two different contractors work in two different areas, and they have a little bit different focus, but again, we do try to stay ahead so that we don't run into the problems where we're cutting open a brand-new pavement.
Right, okay, great. And then my second question is, so your numbers showed basically a third of our streets are poor or failed. Did the, is your chart on the budget and the money needed, does that cover all of the streets, or is that just, like, where does that third fit into the money needed for rehabilitation?
So, you know, basically, we try to stretch the 1.8, if you will, as best we can. So as I mentioned a little bit earlier, you know, we like to try to do some of the light maintenance in that 70, go back to the chart. Kind of in that kind of the green area, you like to do some of the light maintenance, and that would be the slurry seal, and that kind of continues the life of the lawn. So we try to do a mixture of all. So we may not be able to get through all the, you know, the poor or failed areas, but we try to do as much as we possibly can. And so that's why I mentioned that there's a little bit of art to kind of really kind of balance that out, because obviously, you want to stretch the dollar as much as possible. You want to try to maximize the life of the area that are in green, but you also want to address kind of the streets that are kind of really, you know, rutted, if you will, and failed. And so there's kind of a balance of, you know, trying to make sure that we capture the whole segment and not just a smaller segment, and then just kind of ignore the others.
Right, I understand that, too. Okay, well, I would just like to echo Adam's comment. I think I would like to fund more street rehabilitation, and maybe in our budget cycle, if you can give us a little more detail on that third of streets that are failing or failed, I'd like to try and see what we can do.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. So I see two pieces of good news in this report. One is I'm now a pavement distress type detector and expert, so thank you for that. That in combination with informed San Carlos app is a dangerous combination, but, and then secondly, we are better than Belmont in this case. So I think, I know Charles is very proud of the work he's done recently, but clearly, he hasn't caught up to us yet. But in any event, so to kind of build on what Sarah's talking about, I'm just wondering, you gave us kind of, you know, status quo, what we have today and what Nirvana would look like, which would best us. We'd come out above Foster City, which would be really great, but as you pointed out, that would be expensive, and we'd have to carry that through a number of budget years. What I would be curious to have you, you know, if you were to come back to us, like it sounds like you will be, to look at different strategies around addressing this. So when I look at this, if we have 6% that are at PCI 0 to 25, those streets are pretty bad off, right? But then what's curious is PCI between 50, 25, and 70, it's a really steep curve, right? So, and in addition, the collector streets and residential and local fall below our average.
Yes.
So what I would be curious to see would be some different strategies to try to get us at least to the San Francisco Bay Area PCI of 67, and maybe a little bit higher, but a mix of solutions, because it looks to me like, in this case, a stitch in nine, a stitch in time could save nine, right, with those two middle brackets?
Right.
And to try to stay ahead of that, but then we still have a number of streets that are really in disrepair.
Right, right.
So I'd be curious to see kind of a range of options that would help us kind of get ahead and stay ahead, but maybe not to the level of, you know, just because while we do have surplus, we don't, we, you know, it's like getting, you know, 50 bucks for your birthday, you spend it a bazillion ways before you actually spend it. So we're going to have a lot of other choices that we're going to have to make, so.
And certainly with this an exercise, and yes, I will have my staff kind of prepare kind of some strategies on how we could get from here to there, if you will. The one thing I forgot to mention in the presentation, and this is something that I think you need to be aware of, or certainly, so whenever we do any type of street reconstruction or street major reconstruction, that's basically where we're kind of removing and doing some really heavy maintenance or overlays. One of the things that is required by law, we actually have to, if the curbs, if you will, the corner curbs, do not have the ADA ramps, if they're not in place, that's something that we have to do under that project. And so I talk to my staff, and basically, if you look like a four-corner intersection, you know, properly each corner takes approximately about $10,000 to actually convert from just a regular standard curb that you might see to a kind of ADA ramp. And the reason why a lot of that, I mean, it seems obviously pretty expensive, so obviously that intersection of four corners, that's $40,000, you know, just for, to convert, and that doesn't, that's not part of the street. That goes into, you know, to do that conversion from the curb ramp. And the reason why is basically, I think, you know, federal government was actually seeing a lot of cities, although they were trying to comply with the conversion over the, they weren't quite making it fast enough, and so the streets would actually get kind of repaved, reconstructed, but then the ramps would never get redone. So this is the one way that, you know, the government would, rules and regulations were may put in place to kind of ensure that cities would actually start converting a lot of their, the curb ramps over to be more ADA compliant. And so a lot of that budget, the 1.8 that we spend, actually does go through concrete work, which is part of the curb and gutter work, or part of the curb ramp details. Unfortunately, most asphalt contractors, they're not concrete contractors, so they actually have to get a sub. So sometimes those costs become a little bit higher than we, if we were to do our own. So there's a mixture of things that we could do and look at to perhaps get that cost lower, but still, it's a cost that would be associated as part of a street reconstruction.
Ron?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. So the slide that really intrigued me is this one, the PCI comparison, and I wonder what the discussion is like between the city manager of Daly City and the city manager of San Carlos when you look at the PCI comparison, because Daly City's doing pretty well. Nevertheless, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't help it. When it comes to upgrading pavement, how do you measure the cost in terms of, when you look at a particular stretch of road? Is it by square foot? Is it by square inch? I mean, when, I know it depends obviously on the condition of the road, but let's say you've got something that is in a near-fail condition. How do you estimate what's going to be like, or how much it's going to cost to actually repair that section of road?
So there's, I guess there's two ways to answer it. And one way is, it probably doesn't, it's not going to make a whole lot of sense. You know, the first way we look at is based on tonnage, and it's based on the asphalt itself. So basically, if you're an asphalt person, and I'm not one of them, but if you're an asphalt person, you kind of know how much tonnage will have, so much square footage of a street. But basically, what we look at is kind of the, kind of linear foot, if you will, assuming a certain width of street itself. And then we, you know, convert that into kind of tonnage, and that would kind of give us a sense. So just basically, what we find is we're, you know, on our projects that we do is we're finding we do approximately about two miles a street every year.
Two miles a street every year?
Right.
Okay. And then, I think this is probably more or less intuitive, but it would seem to me that the best time to fix a street is sooner rather than later. But given that, and we've got, what, I think the number was about 30% of our streets that are, you know, in serious disrepair, how do you prioritize it? Do you, do you have sort of a list of streets that you are planning on, that are like the most severely damaged that you're planning on? And taking into consideration what you said earlier, there may be sewer repair, there may be upgrades going on, and that, and that sort of thing. How do you prioritize that?
So, you know, obviously, I think the way that probably most people think is, okay, you would probably want to focus your efforts on kind of the, there is support of fail and try to bring those up to speed. Unfortunately, if you take that approach, then over a course of time, first of all, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of money to kind of address a lot of that. So you get them up to, let's say, even 60 or 65. During that period of time that you're doing that effort, some of the better streets that you have from 70 PCI or greater, actually, they start to deteriorate. And as you kind of remember on that S curve, they start to hit that S or that steep part of the S curve, so they could go, you know, go really quickly as well. In the meantime, you're still kind of addressing a lot of the, kind of the poor to failed streets. So it really is kind of, you know, a balance of trying to make sure you kind of address some of the good streets, kind of make sure that they stay in the green section, if you will, but you also kind of spend your money on those areas. You know, you try to catch them early before they go into that vertical portion of that S curve. But then you also realizing that we can't just ignore kind of the poor or failed, you also try to address those as best you can. Again, taking into account, you know, what is being planned for that street, you know, or is there any underground work or any future work going to be constructed on that street?
One thing I thought of when you were going through, obviously, there's a lot of asphalt involved in it. Is the asphalt prices, do the asphalt prices fluctuate, or do they tend to just go up? I'm sure that factors into your budget, just the pure cost of asphalt itself.
It does. I mean, just like the price of gasoline that we pay.
It's a petroleum product, I'd say, right?
It fluctuates based on, you know, the cost of the petroleum, but also, we also see the cost of the project will depend on how busy the contractors are. And then especially, especially if there are a lot of cities within the peninsula that, you know, we're all concerned about that PCI, and we need to get our, their pavement projects done, and we're all competing for, with the same contractors. Obviously, the more competition for those contractors, they increase their unit price to us as well. And so it's kind of a challenge to sometimes even get your contractor, because sometimes they only want to be here for a specific time, and because they have other jobs lined up back-to-back.
Big balancing act, I'm sure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just a couple of questions, and then kind of a suggestion for the next budget cycle. I want to make sure I understand, at least theoretically, is it possible to maintain a street in any given condition, or at least perhaps if it's in reasonably good shape? Or do they inevitably decay over time? They just have to eventually be replaced?
I think the best way to answer it is yes. They, you know, because asphalt is, you know, a lot of the petroleum product, and it kind of relies on the oils in the asphalt to kind of keep it pliable. But as you probably were, I mean, and that's why you may see, like, when a new street first goes down, it's very black. It looks like tar, it looks very black. But over a course of time, as you put your tires on it, you know, trucks go on it, more experienced, more aware, over a course of time, the asphalt starts to wear, but also some of those oils start to evaporate, and that's when, you know, the asphalt itself will become more brittle, and that's why you start seeing a little cracking, the alligator that you saw earlier, kind of unraveling. But basically, you know, that will wear over time, and so that will get old. And so using that S curve that we saw, you know, probably that portion, about 15 years, is probably kind of 75% of lifespan of the asphalt itself. So that's kind of the bright point, and once you reach that point, if you don't really do a whole lot beyond that, that's when it goes into that steep curve, and so kind of a good street could actually deteriorate very quickly.
But it also sounds to me like, at some point inevitably, every street's going to go into a position where we have to replace it.
I would say yes. I think a lot of it is because, you know, of course, as, you know, as I mentioned earlier, once water gets into the street and it affects the base, that's kind of the beginning of the end, if you will. So that's why if you see potholes in the street, you know, that street is probably in danger of starting to fail.
This is sort of building a little bit on, but I think in a little bit different direction, the discussion you were having with Sarah a few minutes ago. What I would be interested in seeing at the next budget cycle, basically, is what would the plan look like that would eliminate everything in the last two segments, the sort of poor, the failed and poor, whatever that bottom quarter was or bottom 30%? What would eliminate that while, since I know that that's likely to be fairly expensive, while reasonably holding the line? And I guess what I'm getting at is, it wouldn't bother me per se if the quality of the streets on the upper end sort of declined into the 70s or high 60s even, as long as we could get rid of the ones that are on the really low end, which would in turn tend to bring the average up, but averages can be misleading in this case, okay? Because it does seem to me that the impact on the community members is not linear sort of with the, with the condition of the road. I mean, if it's in a really poor condition, that's much worse than something that's just not in great condition, but okay. And I'd kind of like to get rid of the ones that are in really poor condition, or at least find out what it costs. And if you come back and tells me, tell me that's the $75 million, and I might not be interested in doing that either, but I'd at least like to know.
Sure. And we could kind of bracket and kind of demonstrate to the council, you know, certainly, if you were expecting, or if this is something you desire, you know, this is what the cost would be versus that. So certainly, yeah, that's an exercise we could come back with.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? In that case, thank you, Steve. Very much appreciate it. We are going to take a five-minute, well, we'll take an eight-minute break. We'll reconvene at 9:20. We will reconvene. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
So we're going to take up Item 8B, Report to the City Council on the Annual Update on Police Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, City Council, City Staff, City Manager. I'm Captain Mark Dury, Chief of Police for the City of San Carlos, and I'm going to give you our annual report. I'm going to start out this evening with our first slide. It's actually our org chart. It gives, it breaks down our department here in our bureau. Starts with me as a police captain and chief of police services, and then we have one management analyst, one records technician under me. We have two assigned investigators dedicated to San Carlos, five patrol sergeants, 10 deputies, two canine deputies, two motor officers, and 70, seven community service officers. Also, under my command, I oversee the, which is not part of the contract, but is housed here in San Carlos, the psychiatric emergency response team, the crime suppression unit, which has one sergeant and three detectives. The psychiatric emergency response team, also known as the PERC team, has two detectives and two behavioral health clinicians. I'll get into them a little bit later in my presentation. And I also oversee the human trafficking program. They're housed here in San Carlos, and we also have a new OES district coordinator here at this full-time. As far as measuring crime stats, we use the U.S. Department of Justice and FBI crime, uniform crime reporting statistics. These are chosen because they are serious crimes and they occur in regularity nationwide and determined likely to be reported to law enforcement. As you can see, they're a combination of crimes of violence and property crimes. We call them part-run crimes. Here's a 10-year overview of the San Carlos Bureau. 2009, of course, is when it was still the San Carlos Police Department. We took over in 2010. Since 2009, we've been decreasing, as mentioned in the eight serious crimes on the previous slide here in the, in the San Carlos Bureau. The decrease is due to our, really, our proactive measures here within the sheriff's office. We're always at full staff here, and we also have the intelligence-led policing model, which I'll get into further on in my presentation. It's a model on how we do our investigation and share our information, and how it's data-driven and really works for us as far as sharing information and really mapping out crime trends and really, at the stopping that. And that's where the intelligence-led policing model really was defined, was two thousand fifteen. And we started the process in two thousand sixteen. And as you can see throughout the years, ending here in two thousand nineteen, it's decreased steadily and nicely, I may add. As far as crime clearance rates, two thousand nineteen rates are really not available yet through the state of California, the Department of Judges, Justice. So I'm going to use the two thousand eighteen clearance rates. The sheriff's office in San Carlos Bureau, as far as violent crime, as you can see, the state of California is at forty-five percent. And as far as violent crime and property crime is ten percent. And as you move on down the graph, you can see that the San Carlos Bureau exceeds all those of the state, the county, and even the sheriff's office as far as violent crimes. We almost mirror the sheriff's office as a whole as far as property crime. Both clearance rates are above standard, like I said, in state and county averages. And I credit the, our intelligence-led policing model, the advancement of technology, and our crime analytics. We have crime analysts that, that we use constantly, that really map everything out as far as our crime and statistics, and what crime and where it's happening. And of course, we can never, we can never not recognize our proactive law enforcement. Our countywide violent clearance rates at a glance, when compared to other cities, San Carlos has the highest clearance rate for violent crimes in San Mateo County, where it's sixty-eight percent. This is done steadily. As you can see, the county average is at forty-seven percent, and the sheriff's average is at sixty-three. They're factored both in the same numerics, but I broke it down and listed all the San Carlos cases over the last year. And our clearance rates are second to none in the county. And the county, as you see, they're mapped out city one through ten. Those are cities within our county. I'm just not going to identify them. I know it is. Countywide property crimes, clearance rates at a glance, we're a third at nineteen percent. Has, we have the third highest rate in San Mateo County. And it should be noted, the average clearance rate for the San Mateo County Sheriff's Offices was actually second. This consists, this consists really of the data that's compiled from all sheriff's office jurisdictions. When I, when it says sheriff, it's all our unincorporated areas and contract cities, including the Transit Bureau. And again, I credit our detectives and our deputies and our ILP model for this success. And here, I'm getting finally to our intelligence-led policing model. The sheriff's office utilizes crime, crime analysts to gather and access crime data. The crime data can be used to identify trends, collaborate information, and provide detection, direction with enforcement. Our goal is always early detection and crime trends and advanced technologies. The sheriff's office has increased training in the use of ILP, the intelligence-led policing model, with methods and procedures. And we increase training in crime trends and investigative options. We use a system that we developed that started in two thousand sixteen. It's called the Smart Force. And it's a program that we use in all our bureaus and unincorporated areas, where we checked our effective areas, whether we have burglaries, and we share information on suspects, suspect vehicles, crime trends. Because we've come to the realization that a lot of the same suspects are in all our different contract cities and cities around San Mateo County. So the more data we have on these suspects and their, and their crime trends and their behaviors, the more successful we'll be, we can be to get ahead of them and track them down and actually arrest them. And this is all a shared data-driven model. Automated license plate readers, they've assisted us with investigations such as residential burglaries, vehicle burglaries, commercial burglaries. They've even assisted us with missing person, locating missing persons, vehicle traffic measuring in certain intersections, and other violent crime investigations. We've had a lot of recent success with our ALPs, our ALPR, in identifying burglary crews that have been running, or kind of been prevalent within San Carlos. We had a case last week that I kind of want to note. Within our Vigilant Solutions System, when we got a stolen, a report of a stolen vehicle or stolen license plate, we can enter that in our Vigilant System. And bad luck for these gentlemen that entered our town. They entered right at shift change. So shift change for us means there's twice as many deputies on duty. Some are getting off, some are coming on. So they entered through one of our corridors where their ALPR driving a stolen car. So it came upon our screen that a stolen car entered the city. We had the vehicle description. And twice as many deputies left the station. Within minutes, they found the car in the Home Depot parking lot. And the gentleman inside the car were very surprised that four deputy sheriffs surrounded him within minutes. The car was stolen. They were from the East Bay. And the driver was arrested for stealing the car, or having possessed, having possessed a stolen car. There was someone in the car that was on probation. There was a probation violation on that person, so they were arrested. And there was another gentleman in the car that possessed narcotics. Now, all of them, we looked at their rap sheets. They were all prolific burglars. So they were surprised because they came, and I'm not saying they were here to do any kind of crime, but they were surprised that we were on them so quickly. And that's a credit to the ALPR system. We would have never known that they were in town and probably until really after the fact. So, I mean, we have so much success with that. And I'll note some more cases further on down the line in my presentation. But they're really second to none. We just have so much success with those in all our violent crimes and property crimes as well. Emergency response times. We maintain over four-minute average of response times to emergency calls for service over the last several years. Truthfully, traffic volume is a direct impact on our response times. As we all know, as the last few years, traffic is getting worse. But with increased traffic, even with increased traffic, which the entire Bay Area is experiencing, we are proud to show only a three-second increase from the previous year. As far as calls for service in two thousand eighteen, we handled two thousand, or, I'm sorry, twelve thousand six hundred and three calls in the city of San Carlos. And that's dispatch calls. That isn't any kind of in-service or any proactive stuff, or calls for service, or anything the deputies generate. And that is the highest volume of any of our contract cities. As of year-to-date right now, we're at twelve thousand seventeen. And if we average that out, we'll be a little over thirteen thousand calls for service in town. And within that, we get to most of our calls, emergency calls within just over four minutes. Some new technology here within the sheriff's office, our body worn camera and in-car camera systems. We've gone to a whole new type of in-car camera system and body worn camera system. It's the Axon system. So they mat, they mate and mirror each other. So everything that we record on our cars and our cameras is automatically downloaded in our evidence-based system. So we don't have to pull any kind of film or anything like that. And it's readily available online whenever we need to see it. So we have any kind of pictures or, or video to be, that's invaluable in the world of law enforcement. The cameras assist with evidence collection. It helps us with use of force reviews or any kind of complaints that we generate. And it really assists in prosecution of many criminal investigations. We also have, we're also developing an unmanned aerial vehicle program, a UAV program. This is currently at development stage. We just developed a policy and procedure. This can assist with evidence and crime scene documentation, and increases officer safety when searching for dangerous persons. And it's also able to search for at-risk individuals. And it gives us an increased security measure during large community events. And the real neat, the real neat thing about this UAV system that we're going to embark on here is that it has the exact same camera as our body camera. So it records everything and downloads everything to our evidence-based system. And another feature it has, which really can help with fire prevention and with locating suspects at night, it has a thermal camera, and that can detect heat sources such as into, with vehicles, people, or any kind of fire. And I know your presentation says tasers next. When I developed this presentation, I thought our new revamp taser program was a little farther than it was. It's not. So I decided to report on our new thermal spotlights that I'm putting on our patrol vehicles here. It's a pilot program, and we're going to put it on two of our patrol vehicles in the coming months. And it kind of mirrors the unmanned aerial vehicle program. There are spotlights that have infrared and a thermal camera. So we can, we can shine it in an area that's dark, and it'll pick up heat, and it'll display it on our car, inside our, on our MDT in our car. So in case there's any kind of heat source, like a fire, or a person hiding from us, or any kind of vehicle, any kind of heat source, we'll be able to see it. It's kind of state-of-the-art. So we're going to try it first here in San Carlos and a few of our other bureaus. And I'm also going to give you a quick update on our firearms range, since I am the project manager for that. We're in the final phase of our construction. In two thousand seventeen, we built a state-of-the-art firearms range at the County Point Park Facility. It's, both of these ranges are really the greenest ranges in California, where we don't expose any of our lead into the ground. And it's a state-of-the-art training facility for the sheriff and all local law enforcement. Both federal, state, county, and local law enforcement use it. It's one of the most eco-friendly range facilities on the West Coast. I know everyone's favorite topic is traffic collisions. As far as, we're really experiencing a downward trend in traffic collisions in the city of San Carlos. As you can see, our auto pedestrian rate is really down. It was twenty-two last year, and this year, we're only up to three, which is good. And our DUIs are down. Our injury accidents are down. And overall, we're down in accidents, DUIs, and auto pedestrians. This decrease in all these collisions and overall is due to really our directed traffic enforcement. In two thousand eighteen, when I took over in San Carlos for Gary Garathas, my first order of business was to revamp not only the traffic, the way we do traffic here within San Carlos, but the entire sheriff's office. So we did a lot of traffic enforcement. We did a lot of traffic studies on where the traffic was, where the traffic accident was. And what we did was, we kind of used that intelligence-led policing model and used our data to see where we really needed to enforce traffic, both on putting DUI cars at night, and enforcing traffic during the day within school zones and such. And it's obviously made a direct improvement. We use the three Es: enforcement, education, what was the other E?
Engineering.
Engineering. I always forget the DPW side of it, the Stephen part. And so, that's what we use. So we've really been working with Stephen and with Jake, our traffic sergeant, in really working within the city to find different ways to fight traffic and to do traffic enforcement. A big part of it was community outreach, sending out postcards during different traffic campaigns, and really focusing on distracted driving. We noticed that when we focused on distracted driving and really put that out in the community, that it really made a difference on accidents and driver behavior. Now, as far as citation issuance, with increased traffic enforcement and citations, we yielded more citations this year. This was more, again, through directed traffic enforcement and finding where, you know, the hotspots were, where we needed to work harder on making things safer. We spent a lot of time on school zones, and we spent a lot of time on industrial road and in various intersections on, on Holly and Laurel Street as well. As you can see, this, our success really has contributed to full staffing and traffic situation enforcement. And it really, really what set this apart was the traffic circuit and circulation funding that you allowed us, that you gave us. So we were able to put many more motors and many more traffic units out during the day, especially during peak times like on Fridays and different school times, different things like that. The trending increase in parking violations issued, while we're slightly behind from two thousand eighteen, the total fines have doubled. We've revamped the way we've done our parking. When I got to San Carlos, our CSOs were writing a lot of fix-it tickets, which they still do. But we really put them on a parking schedule, a time schedule where they could work on Laurel Street and different areas to work on the time meters. And it's really improved parking. I know sometimes it's hard to, hard to see the parking improvement, but it has improved. And with that, we've almost doubled our fine, our fine rate. Obviously, that's not our goal, but it shows that we have really been working hard on improving our, our traffic citations as far as moving parking along and make sure people honor the two-hour parking limit in certain areas of the city. The reason we've been so successful in the parking program is we've increased the training of our community service officers and parking enforcement with identified violations. And we've also increased coordination with time parking enforcement routes and procedures. Traffic safety analysis. Reported traffic collisions overall are downward trend. Reported collisions and enforcement are an upward trend. So it's, it's been a good balance for us. Our decreased collisions are believed to be a direct result of increased traffic enforcement, education efforts with the community, and coordinated efforts with the Department of Public Works with traffic and engineering solutions. Traffic and circulation funds have been invaluable and resource and provided additional deputies on patrol and increased traffic enforcement. While we can't be everywhere at once, these funds help provide more enforcement and traffic safety reminders when the sheriff's office is conducting high visibility patrols and directed enforcement in certain areas of the city. Now, emergency preparedness. We used to have a part-time OES coordinator. We've hired a full-time OES coordinator now, and she's working directly with the city. Her goal is to provide emergency management training, update the city manager, or city emergency operations plan, and do public outreach and community education and disaster preparedness. She'll be doing that on a full-time basis. She's also overseeing the emergency operations retrofit update, the project that we're doing upstairs, which is moving on a little slower than we'd like, but it's still moving. And we've also done, as far as emergency preparedness, wildlife outreach meetings and evacuation drills. And we participated probably in the last seven, eight months, the public safety power shut-off planning meetings. It's been with fire, the sheriff's office, the Bradwood City Police Department, OES, and PG&E. We've met many times, and we were prepared, as prepared as we could be when the power shut-offs came. As far as our real-time sheriff's office response during the power shut-off, on that evening, we doubled our force. So we doubled up, and we made sure that those extra four deputies that we had on made sure that they saturated the areas that were without power. And during that time, even though it was difficult for many, we didn't really have any law enforcement issues or any problems moving forward until the power was turned on. Our school resource unit. We developed a school resource binder. Jake will pass this along here, if you guys can take a look. Based on what happened, you know, the unfortunate occurrences that happen in Parkland and, and all over, unfortunately, more often than not, here in the United States, emergencies at school, whether it's school shootings or lockdowns or whatever, we revamped our school mapping program. We didn't only do it here. than we'd like, but it's still moving. And we've also done, as far as emergency preparedness, wildlife outreach meetings and evacuation drills. And we participated probably in the last seven, eight months, the public safety power shut-off planning meetings. It's been with fire, the sheriff's office, the Redwood City Police Department, OES, and PG&E. We've met many times, and we were prepared, as prepared as we could be when the power shut-offs came. As far as our real-time sheriff's office response during the power shut-off, on that evening, we doubled our force. So we doubled up, and we made sure that those extra four deputies that we had on made sure that they saturated the areas that were without power. And during that time, even though it was difficult for many, we didn't really have any law enforcement issues or any problems moving forward until the power was turned on. Our school resource unit. We developed a school resource binder. Jake will pass this along here if you guys can take a look. Based on what happened, you know, the unfortunate occurrences that happened in Parkland and all over, unfortunately, more often than not here in the United States, emergencies at school, whether it's school shootings or lockdowns or whatever, we revamped our school mapping program. We didn't only do it here in San Carlos. We did it for every school that the sheriff's office utilizes and oversees, whether it's in unincorporated areas in our contract cities. So the binder that Adam has, that he'll pass down, it has every map of every school, and it's going to be revisited every year and updated. It has contact information of who's in the school, the maps of the school. So when deputies respond to any kind of emergency, they'll be prepared, and they'll have all the maps and contact information of all the schools. Now, this binder you see here is in every sergeant's vehicle. And this map is also automated, and it's in every patrol vehicle on our SharePoint system, and it'll come up on the MDT when they look for it. And that'll be updated on a yearly basis. We also promote safe routes to school flyers. And we developed, this was developed by the school district and the city, and the input was provided by our school resource unit. This was provided to all school staff and parents. And traffic safety was a constant topic of discussion between school resource deputies, school staff, parents, and students. Cyber safety education. We were part of school assemblies hosted by our school resource deputies, and resources were provided through various outlets as we make sure that cybersecurity and cyber safety is a big deal, especially for us parents who aren't as technically savvy as our younger children. And I speak from experience on that. As far as the Big Five training in school staff, the Emergency Response Protocol, we participated in Shelter-in-Place, Drop-and-Cover-and-Hold-On, Secure Campus, Lockdown and Barricade Drills, and various evacuation drills with the kids in our schools. We also provide training to school staff and patrol deputies on how to immediately respond during emergency response situations. Every deputy that comes to San Carlos is trained on every school that we're in. Each patrol team picks a school once a week or once a month, depending on their schedules on when they work. And they go to each school, and they learn the evacuation points, the points we're going to set up, command post, and just familiarity utilizing that binder on where to go, where to be, where the exit points are. And they discuss different options if there's an incident here, where would we set up, there's an incident, a different part of the school where they would set up, and different things like that. So that's commonplace every month here within the sheriff's office. And we've also participated in the Big Five lockdown drills at all the schools here as well. Community engagement. As far as strategic communications, we really push out different crime trends, safety concerns, and quality of life issues. We do this through SMC Alert, through press releases, through various postcards, through the Spotlight, through the Council newsletter. We try to do this just to engage the community and let them know what's happening and kind of what the hot topic is in town. As far as community events, the sheriff's office continues to have a significant presence at the major community events and organizes many of its own events. These events include Neighborhood Watch presentations and training, National Night Out, Hometown Days, Night of Lights, our Holiday Troy Drive that we're doing with the Fire Department, and our special pre-K and kindergarten talks that our school resource officer does, movie nights in the park, and our Play Streets program. We're also doing the Holiday Charity Troy Drive that we're partnering with the Fire Department on. And a new thing that we're trying is Shop With a Cop event that we've been advertising lately that we'll do with Target. And also Adopt a Unit program. This is kind of a program that's kind of near and dear to my heart. The city of San Carlos over the last 50 years has sponsored the 101st Airborne Division Screaming Eagles out of Kentucky. They're a U.S. Army unit, and they're currently in Iraq. In October, we packaged 20 care packages and sent it out to them. And we had the school kids, our school resource officer, Albert, had the school children write notes to the, to all the military men and women that are over there that we represent and that represent this city. We're putting packages together again now for Christmas. So we're going to have the kids write Christmas cards to all these servicemen and women, and all my staff is going to do that as well. And I'm going to ask some of the city staff to help. And I would like to offer, maybe if you give you guys a few cards, if you guys would like to write it, and we can put, the more cards, the better. So we're going to send probably 20 packages out, probably the second week or third week of December, if you guys are up to it. We will provide you with the cards. Downtown Services Unit. It's a pilot program that you, all of you are very well aware of. It was launched in October 2019. It was, the directed focus was on downtown safety, traffic and pedestrian safety, parking concerns, and dealing with various community issues. And also, we found out it was really a good way to identify homeless people that are in town. And, you know, it's really the best way for us to offer them resources in, you know, and how to live their life better and how to get help. It's also helped us with community outreach with business. And we're currently trying to develop a business survey to pass out to businesses to see, kind of to measure our effectiveness and to see what they think, what we could do better, what we're not doing, what they like, because we're still in the pilot program stage, and we're trying to fine-tune what the Downtown Services Unit does. And just the deputy will take a patrol car down, he'll park it down there, and he'll walk up and down Laurel Street and check in with businesses, enforce traffic, pedestrian traffic as well. And to date, as of tonight at 5 o'clock, since October 2019, they've prepared 53 citations, made three arrests, and done 167 business checks. And business check constitutes where they go in and actually contact the business owner and talk to him and see, you know, what kind of what's going on and how the business is. Is there any trends on Laurel Street that they see, or any other of the outlined streets as well? It's filled on a part-time basis, and it's four days a week on 10-hour days. We're currently from Thursday to Sunday. We started at 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and we've since switched it to, I think it's, is it 10 to 7? 9 to 7 now. So with the holiday hours, we want, we want them out a little later at night as people are shopping and enjoying Laurel Street and such. So, but staffing is flexible, and we're expected to adjust the schedule again as we go on into the wintertime. The gun buyback. I'm sure you've seen the advertisement. We've hosted the last gun buyback in Redwood City for the last two years. This will be the first time we've done it in San Carlos. It's on December 14th on Skyway Road. In 2018, we held two gun buybacks, and we were very successful. We collected 868 firearms. Forty-five of those firearms were assault weapons collected in 2018. And during these events, we pass out firearms safety information, and we provide firearm safety locks for people that don't have them. Those are all free of charge. And on December 14th, I'd like to invite all of you to Skyway Road and to our gun buyback event, if you guys want to come out and see how it looks and how it As far as other major initiatives that we've worked on, and we're going to go into 2020, is maintain school safety. You know, student safety and traffic safety is paramount for us. And we always find a way to prove in our preparedness in schools, as I indicated before. As far as community events, we had the unfortunate event in Gilroy that happened at the garlic festival. And because of that, I don't know if anyone noticed, but for Hometown Days, we actually doubled our police force that day. But I didn't want it to appear that we doubled, so they were, they were actually stationed in various areas where they were spread out. But we had twice as many law enforcement officers on that day than we had the year previous. Not that we were expecting anything, but we just wanted to be prepared. So I don't know, did any of you notice? It worked, Jake. So... And as far as our psychiatric emergency response team, when I took over in 2018, we had one deputy and one clinical technician from Behavioral Health Services to service all our contract cities and all our unincorporated areas, which is about 180,000 people. So that's, I used to call our detective Tabak, who's since promoted to sergeant, the Army of One. So when he went on vacation, those services left. So last year, I wrote a staff report and presented it to the sheriff, who, and also presented to the head of Behavioral Health Services. And it was presented to county manager Mike Callagie, and we were able to double that. And so now, starting November 19th, which was just the other day, we now have two detectives here and two behavioral health technicians. And our goal is to help, you know, as we all know, mental, the mental health issue is never going to go away. And so we're, we have twice as many people working for us. They hand out resources, and what they do is they review every crime report that we have that comes in every night. And if there's a mental health component, they reach out for resources, reach out to the families, and to see if they need anything. And hopefully, we can get them out of the system, because a lot of times, the mental health system isn't really, or people with mental illness, law enforcement isn't what they really need. It's really resources. I represent the San Mateo County Chiefs and Sheriff's Board. I'm on the county mental health board. So that's why this was near and dear to my heart. So when county manager Callagie gave me the, or gave us these two positions, it was the only two positions that he increased in the entire county last year with these, with these two positions, and we were fortunate to get them. Finally, on this slide, organized crime. Again, like I said, I oversee the Crime Suppression Unit. They're the guys that park downstairs on all those black vehicles and wear those kind of cool undercover uniforms. They do all our supplemental investigations, do all our stakeouts, and do our search warrants. They're the ones that knock at your door 2:00 in the morning at times. And they did a great investigation. We had a, I'll tell you this story about a Home Depot investigation where they caught someone that was stealing tools, and they wrote a search warrant on his house. And they'd been tracking him through the ALPR system, because he was on a wanted flyer. And they caught him here, they arrested him. And they found out that he was burglarizing all these Home Depots within the Bay Area, and that he had a storage locker in Hayward. And within the storage locker in Hayward, he had thousands and thousands of dollars worth of tools, and they were able to track him, that he was going back and forth to Mexico and selling these tools, although he's going all the way down to Mexico. So based on that investigation, they turned him over to HSI, and they took over the investigation and went federally on him. But that started in San Carlos via our Crime Suppression Unit and via our ALPR system. And before I take any questions, because I know Adam said he had about 25 for me tonight, I'd really like to thank and recognize my staff. They're the hardest-working, most dedicated, compassionate people I've ever been around, and I'm just lucky to have them. I kind of always take in the mantra of Ronald Reagan, surround yourself with great people, delegate authority, and just get out of the way. And so that's kind of what, what I've been doing here. But we have 29 great people here that work here in San Carlos, and another 800, and I believe it's 827 now as of the other day, in the sheriff's office. And we're very lucky to be working here in San Carlos, and I'm very lucky to have them. And I also like to thank the city staff, city manager Jeff Malpe for his leadership and his vision. And I'd like to thank all my department heads. They're great to work with, and we collaborate constantly on different things and improve things in the city. I'd even like to compliment the Fire Department, which I don't do too often. And I wish Dave was here to hear that. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you. Anytime I've ever needed anything, whether it's individually, or any kind of resources, or ideas, or you come to me with ideas, we just collaborate and we get things done. And like I've always said individually, and I've said it to many people in this room, you know, law enforcement is a team game. You know, we do a lot of the heavy lifting here, because we wear the uniforms and we have the equipment. But we couldn't do it without the support of the city council, the city manager, and really the support of the community. So I want to thank you for that, and I will take your questions now.
Well, thank you, chief. For, we certainly are very grateful for you and your staff and for your leadership as well. Before we do questions, I don't have any cards from anybody, but is there anybody in the public who would like to address the council on this item? All right. So questions from the dais? If you're going to make a comment, sir, I'd love to have you do it. If you'd come up and do it and fill out a card, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name's Gary Beldocky. I'm actually retired law enforcement, lived in the city here for about 10, 15 years. And I've come across multiple law enforcement officers. I was extremely impressed with the presentation by the chief. I feel a lot more safer in my house now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would wish to address the council? Seeing none, questions from the dais, I will remind everybody that my sense is, unless we were to continue one of the items, we're not going to end at 10:30, particularly if we end up going into a lot of questions. So just keep that in mind. You still have questions?
No, I'm just kidding. I just want to thank the chief and Jake for the, chief for the presentation, Jake for all the work that they've done throughout the year. And you answered all my questions because you knew I was going to ask about the downtown police officer. So thank you. I'm glad to hear that's going well.
So far, so good.
Laura?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. And what I, what came out loud and clear throughout your presentation was just your willingness to try different strategies, incorporate new technologies in your workflow. And I know that that's not easy to do when you're leading a team of people and you're used to doing things a certain way, and it's clearly paying off. So thank you for your leadership. And San Carlos has a rich history, as you know, and takes a great deal of pride in its safe community. And in fact, the History Museum has a whole display on it. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rod?
Thank you, Mark. Well, on behalf of, personally, on behalf of my entire family, a huge thanks for all the work you've done for us and our family this year. It's been very gratifying, and it's, there was a lot of hard work and a lot, you talked about teamwork, and there was a whole team of people that helped us. So, you know, as one member of the community that's been helped, I'm very grateful. I have one or two questions. I'm not going to ask you. I can ask you offline. So, thanks again.
Yeah, chief, I just want to touch on, for the benefit of the public watching us tonight, or who may be seeing this tape later, on the discussion you and I had this afternoon where there were some comments on Nextdoor about people wishing we would use some of the budget surplus to go back to having our own police department. And I think I forgot to ask you, is it okay if I suggest to those folks that they call you up and sit down and talk to you about what their concerns or issues are?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
No, I mean, I'll talk to anyone about that. I mean, do you, as far as what I think, I just think that we're probably the, we are the best model. I could probably give you 4 million reasons why I think we're the best model, because I think our budget is probably around $8.9 million. And a comparable community would be Belmont, and they're around 4.5, or $14.5 million. But here, you get resources second to none. It was explained to me one time that, you know, we have 29 people assigned here within the San Carlos Bureau, but there's an 800-pound gorilla that's one phone call away. And I'm talking about the other 800 employees. As you know, over the last year, you know, we had one attempted homicide and two that we thought were suspicious deaths, that every suspicious death that we, we treat as a homicide, because it could be. And within, you know, half an hour, you know, there were six homicide detectives here on each of those cases. You wouldn't get that in another police department if you had your own police department. And that, and you're under the umbrella of the entire sheriff's office. You pay for that budget as far as the $8.9 million or so and the 29 people here, but you get all 800 of us. We had, I remember when we first came to San Carlos, there was a bank robbery at Chase Bank on Laurel Street. And within three minutes, there was 14 sheriff's cars there. You're not going to get that in a smaller police department. The resources we have, the crime lab, and the, our Office of Emergency Services, different things like that, you're really not going to get, this is really the best model of policing that you can get. We do all the risk management, we do all the hiring. You're guaranteed every day when you wake up, you'll have three deputies and one sergeant. And if one of those sergeants is on vacation or one of those deputies on disability, you'll still have three deputies and one sergeant, because we'll call one from either Redwood City or another outline bureau. You will always be full-staffed here. In many other police departments, you have to work short, because you just don't have the manpower. And if you work short, a lot of times, you'll have to pull, take a detective out and put him into patrol, or take someone off a motor. You have two full-time motors here, and tonight, we added two more motors to our fleet. So as you, as you see that- So as you, as you see, that there could be more motors coming on a part-time basis here in town, when, based on my previous presentation, enforcing traffic is very important to me. And so with that, we're making strides on making it better and using our resources here, and I just think that we're second to none.
I would certainly agree with that, and I appreciate your willingness to talk to folks who, you know, may have issues or not be aware of some of the things that you were just outlining. So I will definitely pass that along. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sergeant, for coming as well.
If I may, Mark, I just wanted to say thank you as well.
I'm sorry?
And I also wanted to thank you for sharing this binder with us tonight.
It's amazing, isn't it?
It is really great, and as a parent of young children, I just, you guys are so on top of it with the safe routes to school, and the school resource officer, and this, and I just think that that's a wonderful facet of your operation that maybe not everybody knows about, that you're really looking out for our kids.
And that's why I wanted you to see the binder, because it took about six months for that to put together, to get all the numbers on the maps, and a lot of the stuff was outdated, so they did a fantastic job.
That's great. Thank you.
Certainly.
All right. With that, we will move on to Item 9A, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting and agreeing to an amendment to restrictive covenant at 1785 San Carlos Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment, and authorizing the freezing of current traffic housing and development impact fees until December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the city council. I'll be presenting this matter tonight. What you have before you is something that was discovered in the courts of the sale of the property, that is this covenant that's attached to the staff report from 1963, that was for the benefit of the city of San Carlos and limited the use to construction of a medical and dental center, which is currently on the site. In 2011, the city, as part of its general plan amendment process, rezoned the property, not knowing about the covenant, and it's been since 2011 zoned in the RM 59 district, which stands for essentially multi-unit projects are allowed that are up to 50 feet high, not 50 stories, 50 feet high, and have up to 59 units per acre. So when that was discovered, we started some discussions with the then-future property owner, to see how the amendment could be, the covenant could be changed with an amendment that could be brought to the council. The amendment does a few things. The proposed amendment would, in addition to the current use of a medical and dental center, would allow a multifamily unit with strict compliance with the RM 59 standards, which would limit the height to 50 feet in perpetuity. The second thing that's in the resolution that you're being asked to approve is, part of the negotiation was to apply some certainty, the city's getting some certainty on another aspect that I'm going to get to later, and then the developer wanted some certainty on development impact fees for the project. So what's before you is to freeze those fees until December 31, 2024, and that should allow for some ample time to propose and bring to the city for review of a future project on the site. And the third aspect of what you're looking at tonight is to lock in affordability for units and require 20% affordable housing units on the project. Our usual ordinances require 15%, so this is an enhancement in that regard. It's also an enhancement in regard to the types of affordable housing. It has a, 75% would be moderate income, 8 and 1/3% would be for low income, and 16 and 2/3% would be for very low income. So those are, in our ordinance, those levels of affordability aren't specified, it just says affordable, so you're not only achieving a higher percentage, but you're achieving some lower, or achieving, but would require in a future development, some lower income units to go online. Keep in mind that we're not changing the zoning here, this is changing in agreement that the prior owner back in 1963 made with the city that put a restrictive covenant on the property. The current zoning allows for an RM 59 unit, so we're avoiding some ambiguity by having this agreement, and the city's getting some enhancements for some, as we've heard before, some desperately needed low and moderate housing units to be potentially developed in the city. Now, what would come after this, and that's part of, was part of our discussion, you know, how do we, how does a developer bring a project, does a developer bring up a request to amend the covenant along with a project, or do they just ask the council to consider this type of a resolution and amendment to the covenant, and then they pursue a project that would be subject to all the review and consideration by the planning commission, the city council, at a future date? So it was decided that the best way to approach it is to see if the council in the first place is willing to entertain changing the restrictive covenant to allow a potential development that's consistent with the current zoning, or not. So that's why it's here before you in this form, and you don't have a project before you, because that is something the developer's going to have to bring forward in the ordinary course of project review in the future. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them about the restrictive covenant that's before you. One note that somebody pointed out to me, that the staff report didn't have the correct breakdown in the affordability, but the resolution has the correct breakdowns in the amendment to the restrictive covenant.
Thank you, Greg. We'll get back to you, I'm sure, with questions in a minute. I have two speaker cards for folks who would like to adjust the council on this item. If there's anybody else who would like to join in that commentary, please fill out a card and give it to Crystal. First up is David Balducci. Debbie, excuse me.
May I go last?
As long as Louis Boris doesn't ask to go last as well? Sure. Good evening again, Louis.
Again, my name is Lou Boris. I live on Carmelita Drive, and my house or my backyard backs up into the creek, and I'll be seeing the back end of this building, not from the left, not directly in the back of me. I have three triplexes back there, but to the left of that. I've been living on that street there for 54 years, and when I first moved down here in San Carlos, I mean, I saw the logo, which it says up there, "The City of Good Living." I'm really concerned with the way the city is going right now. The last 10 years, I've seen a complete change in the planning and the infrastructure here without consideration of what the people in the city want. I mean, these buildings on El Camino, I mean, that have gone up there, I mean, to me, it's an eyesore when you come into San Carlos now. It's a, I mean, I am being a developer, and all I feel, it's like the city of bottom line, that we get this income from there, and we have this $9 million over budget now, that we're, surplus that we have, and I think that the planning was a little, not completely thought out, is, I mean, in my opinion. The traffic in the residential streets, if you go down any street now, you can't go down from Belmont Avenue down to El Camino without having to pull over about six times to zigzag in between the car, let somebody else pass. The traffic here, as far as the way the traffic patterns are, I mean, there should be some kind of traffic studies here to have one-way streets or something to get the traffic flowing a little bit better, because the traffic getting out of where they want to put this project on Corleone and San Carlos Avenue, I have a trouble getting, I live on Carmelita there, and I come right there, and I try to get out. When you get out, you have to turn your car kind of sideways to make your right hand turn, because these cars coming down San Carlos Avenue, I mean, if they're up on Alameda, you better scoot and get out of there, because they're coming down not 25 miles an hour, but 35 miles an hour, and they'll run right up into the back end of you. I think what they should do is cut off these large projects at Prospect Avenue. It's a perfect place to cut it off there, because it goes down from four lanes, lanes down to two lanes, and now with that thing coming out, they're going to have to put a stop signal at Corleone there for us to get out. That's, that's about all I have to say about that. I'm deadly against this building.
Thank you. Thank you, Lou. You certainly can. Next up is Debbie.
Yeah, there you go.
Good evening.
All right, good evening, everybody. So my name's Sean Peters. I moved to 1866 Carmelita about 18 years ago. I've raised a family of five there. We're very active in the community, our neighborhood, schools, and so on. I live directly opposite of Pulgas Creek, so I live on, I'm sorry, I live on Pulgas Creek, but I live directly opposite of where this development's going to be, so it'll be very much right in my backyard, or looking into my backyard. So I found out about this literally just this afternoon, and I knew about this development coming, but I'm a little bit, it's hard for me to understand how I'm just finding out about this now. I'd love to have all of our neighbors and so on know about this, because I know how they'd feel about it, but if we gave them notice, at least I'm sure you guys would have a lot more people here giving them your opinion and so on, and what they think about this. Haven't had a lot of time to prepare for it, but I wanted to, I wanted to share just in terms of, you know, our opposition to this, because, you know, I know this developer's looking to change the use from its current 15 medical offices, right? But this is a tough parcel right here to be changing and putting a whole multi-use, or excuse me, multifamily development, right? So with apartments and everything else, but you're going from, you know, a parcel that's pretty long and it has a creek, and when you put the riparian area in there, I'm not sure how much buildable space there's going to be on it to begin with. So adding a five-story building, yet to keep in mind, I mean, all of Carmelita, it's one of the best streets in all of San Carlos. I mean, I know I'm biased, but at the same time, it's all one-story homes. So you're going to have a five-story building budding up against the street overlooking all one-story homes. So it's going to change everything for us. I think that there's a reason that they made that a medical office space, and it's just, it would be nice if we all had a chance, actually, to, before you guys vote on changing this, that everyone from at least our neighborhoods had a chance to come in and you could hear their own opinions about it. So I know you guys are all out here, you know, protecting the city, our interests, the residents' interests. This is definitely not in our best interest. So I'm hopeful that you guys will vote this, against this, or keep the way the resolution is today. But I understand there needs to be a new development, and that's okay. It's just a five-story one right here on a creek. When you add the 25-foot setback from the top of Creek Bank, I don't think you're going to have an opportunity to build much right there. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Sean. Debbie, do you want to address us?
Yes, please.
Okay. Debbie Balducci.
Thank you so much for your patience, and for those of you that have heard me before, my main issue is flooding and storm drains, and I also am on Carmelita, and this property will back up to my property over, most of it looks directly into my property. And I've submitted an email, I only learned today about this, so I gave a hard copy to all of you for your records. I won't repeat everything in that here in the essence, so to save time. But a couple of things that you may know about me from my last presentation, is I generally try to like find old documents from the city council or whatever that showed why something was done in the past. For example, closing Postman's Path. In this case, I have not had time to research why the city asked for a protective covenant on the restriction of residential over retail when they approved this development in 1963. However, based on my discussions with some longtime residents, it's my understanding that the city asked for the covenant because this property was located so close to Pulgas Creek. That was one of the main reasons. So Pulgas Creek is one of the riparian corridors, as you know, that drains the city's water down into the bay, and there's already flooding from Pulgas in certain areas of the city. Where we are, our storm drain for the entire block of the street empties out into the creek, and when it backs up, or has high flow, or there's high tide compounding rain, then we get flooding on our creek. So to add a highly dense population of property to that, right on the creek right there, that's going to make that worse. And then think about this, each property owner owns the creek up to the center line, so if this property is allowed to come in there, they have a 15-foot drop in some places down to the creek, if they come in there, they may get to improve their whole side of the creek, which is already just falling into the creek now, but how does that affect private property owners? Because we don't have the money and the resources, nor the ability to get earth-moving equipment back in there to make our side of the creek matching for any hardscape that they put in there. So I would just implore you not to make a decision tonight. Let us have more time to research this and get back to you on it, because there was a reason the city had that restrictive covenant, and told them at that time, no residential over retail, and they were single-story buildings, and maybe a double-story building only. But I can't tell you how upsetting it was to find out today.
Can you move to wrapping up, please?
Yes. It's upsetting to find out today that this was going on, so I did the best I could to put something together to send to you and to the other neighbors who wanted on their behalf to say, can you please delay consideration of this until everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? I am going to entertain a motion to extend the meeting, if somebody would like to make one.
General, would I move we extend the meeting to 10:45?
Second.
There's a motion of the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I know we have questions, I'm sure, from the dais. I'm going to just start by asking, this may be a Jeff question, or I'm not sure who exactly it is. Can you educate everybody a little bit on what the current code requirements are as far as developments that back up on a creek, and perhaps, if you know, the extent to which... Oh, sorry, I didn't realize Al was here. Sorry, Al. Al, can you discuss the way the current development rules are controlling any project that nowadays gets built next to a creek, and if you know how those may differ from back in 1963? I think that might be of interest.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the city council. So the setbacks for a creek development are 25 feet from the top of bank, and it's been that way for decades. Hasn't changed in our zoning code.
And is there anything in the action we're contemplating tonight that would give them an exemption on that?
No.
Okay, so it's basically the standard rules that have been in place for a long time?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm sure there are probably other questions for you. Ron?
Thank you, Mark. Al, you might want to just stay there? If a project comes down, and currently, there's no project, correct?
That's correct.
If a project were to come down, what are the requirements of the developer with respect to either repairing and maintaining, or mitigating, or somehow altering the creek?
Well, we would have some expert take a look at the creek. We'd have maybe a hydrologist engineer take a look at the creek next door to see that the development, whatever they're proposing, wouldn't damage the creek, and then maybe look at the creek alongside the development project to see if it was, needed any repairs, and that's something that could be conditioned, if it did need to have some kind of repairs. Creeks are also overseen by the Army Corps of Engineers, so we would be coordinating, the developer would need to coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers, to make sure that any mitigations or any improvements to the creek pass muster with them. So those are the kinds of things that we would look at. So it would need to be studied, and then we would, we would go from... So it would need to be studied, and then we would go from there.
So would the potential impacts on the neighbors behind it also be studied during that process?
Yeah, I mean, it would look at, you know, would this development, would construction, would the foundation, the weight of the building create any erosion, you know, more than what's there now? If there's significant erosion that's there now, would this project, could this project fix at least that part of the creek bank? We've seen that before with other developments.
And the project itself, the maximum is 50 feet.
That's correct.
Obviously, we would have the authority to approve a somewhat lower project if we wanted to?
Potentially. It would need to go to the planning commission, and if the project conformed to the current code, then that's where it would stay. It doesn't, it wouldn't go to the city council necessarily because it would, most developments that they conformed to the current zoning, that's the, the planning commission would then have authority. However, the city council could call up the project after action by the planning commission, and you could reconsider the action by the, by the planning commission. But the planning commission would be looking at things like height, aesthetics, views, view impacts, setbacks, the design of the building, is it compatible with the area? Does it fit into the site? How it's configured, where, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you, for now.
Thank you, Chair Albert. So thank you to the members of the community who came out tonight. So one of the things I heard was around the traffic and roadways and safety, and I don't know, Al, if this is you, it might be. What are the steps to, you know, if a project were to come in as described, what steps would we take in to address those concerns?
Well, what we typically do is we would have a traffic engineer look at the project and then look at local intersections in the roadway, look at traffic counts, how many, how many cars use that roadway? How many cars are turning and which directions at local intersections? And then we would have that data and take a look at that data, and they would also say, okay, would this project with the number of vehicles and people living in this project create any more of a slowdown on the roadway system? Or would turning movements at a, an intersection be impacted significantly by this project? So that is something we do as part of the environmental assessment of the, of a project like this. And if there are impacts, what kind of mitigations could be built into this development project to reduce those impacts to a level that is acceptable with the city?
Adam.
Sounds like Steve wants to address something.
Oh, sorry.
Me and Mr. Chair, city council members, I just would also like to put one clarification in regards to the Corollaries intersection at St. Carlos. As you are well aware, the St. Carlos pedestrian project is actually underway, and that project will be addressing that intersection in particular. As you are probably aware now, the Corollaries street is actually at a skewed angle to St. Carlos Avenue. So the intent of the project is actually to square it up and make it more of a, you know, a right angle or T-intersection there. So that would certainly help some of the visibility as far as the sight distance as you come out of St. Car, or excuse me, Corollaries as you look down either way of St. Carlos Avenue. So, and the project is under construction now.
Thank you, Steve. Adam.
Thank you, Chair Albert. I just want to sort of also mention that I did meet with the current owners of the property as well, and that it did not, is not sort of impacting me, but I wanted to get information from them on what they were thinking of doing. And then, so you talked about traffic mitigation, and we also, if this covenant is lifted, part of that is, so there's a, there's no density bonus allowed, correct? So what we're talking about for height would be the max, and 50 feet would be for approximately four stories. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. No density bonus.
Regardless, because under normal circumstances for housing, you can get a density bonus to add or grow, and the city has no control over that.
That's correct.
Under normal circumstances. Okay, thank you. And so I think from my end, I mean, where I have the biggest concerns about this are the impact to the creek and the neighbors on the other side. I know we heard from Mr. Boris about the flooding that we've had over there now, and so that's to me the biggest concern that I have about what's mitigation is, could be done on that, because to me it's a big unknown in terms of how we would potentially try to manage that and maybe impact. Can we require something if a project comes through to duplicate what, whatever he's done on one side to be done on the other to make sure that the folks on Carmelita are protected as well?
Through the, through the chair and Councilman Rack, I think right now we're not really, the way, the way we're presenting this and dealing with the covenant first, we were very careful to talk about what we could see as far as something that would be consideration for removing the, or changing the restrictive covenant as opposed to designing the project. So one of the things that staff was thinking is the best way to approach those types of questions is to, it's a legitimate issue to bring up certainly, but it's something we can, it can inform the, for the review in the future as opposed to amending the covenant or doing something at this stage, because we don't really have enough information to.
Well, right, because there's no actual project right now. I'm just thinking any kind of project like that could have a significant impact on the creek, and I'm just concerned about that impact.
And I think that I'm, because of the creek setback and the location of this property, that will almost certainly have to be analyzed as part of this project. So it's something that, a future project, so it doesn't, it's not necessary that we address it tonight, is what I think, what I'm advising.
And can you tell me sort of the process then, sort of if this goes, if some project comes forward that goes through the normal course of action, the, I think it was mentioned, the ability of the city to, the city council to look at it, and can you explain that process?
Yeah, under our code, the, there's two methods for something to come up from the planning commission up to the city council. One is if an interested party appeals it, and the other is for the council itself to call it up, which is tantamount to an appeal. So that, so we, if the council, if a majority of the council thinks it should be pulled up, then we can agendize that to have it brought up for further review at the council level for what they call a de novo review, like an appeal. So you'll be having a second look at whatever the planning commission looked at, and you can independently make a decision based upon the facts and the information that we have at that time.
And that would come at a time when you, when the planning commission either approved or denied a project.
That's right, correct.
Sarah.
Thank you, Mark. I too met with the developer of the project, and I just wanted to educate myself on the project, and I want to thank the members of the community who came out here tonight. And I do want to make sure that our neighbors on Carmelita are feeling informed about this process going forward, so, and that they have input into the process. I want to make sure that we are bringing them along and listening to their, their input and their feedback. So I know that if this goes to the planning commission, there would be that opportunity to weigh in, right? Are there more?
Absolutely. It's a public, duly noticed, public hearing, and depending on the application, there's some distance notification requirements that everyone within the certain distance of the project gets notified.
There are also requirements on projects like this for the developer to do outreach to the neighborhood and whatnot. So this is just an unusual set of circumstances to have a covenant here, so we're sort of talking about a project, but it's not a project where we have an application on yet. So there is no, the process hasn't begun yet. Normally, we wouldn't even know, you know, that somebody was planning maybe to submit a project at this point, but this covenant is, the first time in my career I've seen one of these.
Thank you.
Laura.
And I'll second that, me as well.
Thank you, Chair Albert. So I did also meet with Dungeons Development. They requested a meeting, so of course I took that and listened to what they had to say. In the resolution, it talks about that it could potentially provide an opportunity to improve the riparian environment along Pulgas Creek. Could you help me understand that a little bit better?
Yes. So as noted earlier, what we would do is require a study to be done of that section of the creek near, near the development project. And so they would be looking at the characteristics of the creek to see if it's draining well, if there's things that are blocking proper drainage and, or if there's excessive erosion, or sometimes people build things that shouldn't be built there. Should that be taken out? Should it be restored back to its natural condition? So those are the kinds of things that, that we would have them review. So we really don't know a lot, I mean, just kind of, the neighbors would probably know a lot about it, looking at it over the years and watching the behavior of the creek, but we really don't know too much. The city, you know, we don't have the studies, we haven't studied it yet. But those are the kinds of things that we would look at. We would also look at, because that is a big creek and it drains from higher up in St. Carlos, up in the hills, anything you do to the lower part of the creek, you know, affects drainage below that and above it. And so we want to make sure that it drains, you know, the water runs through it properly. We don't want flooding to occur. We don't want anything that this development project would do to create a flooding or significant erosion problem in this very important channel. So those are the kinds of things that we would be looking at.
Adam.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on the outreach piece. Is it, so what is the current, like, if it was just a regular development, I mean, is it 150 feet? What's the distance in terms of notification for something like this?
It's 300 feet from the boundaries of the property. So essentially, we draw a line around it, and all the properties that are captured within that circle around the boundaries of the property would be notified, all the property owners would be notified in advance of the, of the meeting. But what, what we also do is we strongly encourage the developer to have neighborhood meetings, to reach out to the neighbors themselves, to try and set up meetings. Sometimes they go into people's homes and invite the neighbors, they have coffee. So we, we encourage the developers to, to take part in that, to do that. In some development projects, we will assist the developer and we'll have something at the library or here at City Hall, and we'll invite all the neighbors, and we'll have the developer answer questions, and the staff will be there to answer questions as well. So on most of the development projects, it's usually an iterative public process, even before it gets to the planning commission.
Great, thank you.
All right. Would anybody like to propose a motion?
Chair, Chair Albert, I will move to adopt Resolution 2019 dash?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Yes.
Ninety-seven. A resolution, the City Council of City St. Carlos accepting and agreeing to an amendment through restrictive covenant at 1785 St. Carlos Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment and authorizing the freezing of current traffic, housing, and development impact fees until December 31, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Comments or discussion? Laura.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Albert. So it sounds to me like right now in that particular neighborhood that there are some challenges that the community has been dealing with for some time, and there's a number of factors at play here. So, you know, the status quo of the creek, it sounds like that there's a lot of flooding. In addition, we are in the midst of a major, major housing crisis throughout the state, and, you know, many people are getting displaced daily. The last I heard, the waitlist for housing was up to 2,000 people who were in need of affordable housing, and that increased about 30% since the spring, I believe. It was 1,500 in the May timeframe. So, and, you know, there's the potential to address, I think, multiple concerns with this, I know we're not voting on a project, but with this, by lifting this covenant, right, that could open the door to, I guess, making some improvements in the, in the area potentially. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if we don't lift the covenant, but simply all that can be there is what's currently there, and so there wouldn't be an opportunity to review a project that might have some different approaches or enhancements.
It would be status quo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment here that I very much appreciate people coming out and, and waiting through a lengthier than we anticipated meeting to get to this point. Probably the, the important thing, I want to make sure everybody understands, is that this is the very, very beginning of what may turn into a project. And there will be a lot of opportunity, if something comes forward, for the public to weigh in. There would be environmental impact reports that have to be done. The public actually has an opportunity to weigh in on the scope, if you will, of the environmental impact report before it gets done. In other words, issues that need to be, need to be reviewed. And then the project evaluation itself is a, is a pretty in-depth review as well. So there's lots of opportunities for people to be involved. This is, part of the reason I support what we're, what we're doing here tonight is, to me, this is allowing the zoning land use designation that's been in place for quite a while, which is the multifamily housing use, to actually be implemented. In other words, that, that too is the result of an in-depth study and balancing of various forces. And we are removing sort of an unusual thing that blocked that. But it's not as if this is a cavalier, casual thing to do. There's been a lot of work spent on, on deciding what type of land use can go where. There will be a lot of time spent on what kind of project, if any, goes here and what it's going to have to do to mitigate any issues that it causes. So that's why I'm comfortable going ahead with this, because there's lots of checks and balances going forward. Ron, I see you want to say something as well.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of comments. These are never really easy decisions. We always know that decisions that we make impact somebody. But when I look at the bigger picture, and the bigger picture being the, the need for housing in, in the county and, you know, in general, in St. Carlos in particular, I don't want to close the door to opportunities. Maybe there will be a project there at some point that will not be as intrusive as people think it might be, but as the mayor, as the chair said, this is, we're doing, we're doing something that is allowing the zoning to, to be returned to what it was meant to be. And any project is a long way away. There's going to be ample opportunity for public input and for everybody to have their say, and it ultimately may affect exactly what is built by the developer.
All right. With that, any other comments or questions? Not questions, comments or whatnot? Seeing none, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. We actually have one more item to go, and I apologize for, I know there's at least one or two members of the audience and also some staff members who have waited out here the entire time, but if my colleagues would indulge me, I would like to actually ask that we continue this item until our next meeting. I talked to Jeff, and he said that from staff's point of view, that's, that's okay. I just have a commitment that I have to meet that starts at about 4 o'clock in the morning. So.
I'm good with it.
People okay with that?
So can I just ask, does that mean that the next meeting is, we have nothing, it's sort of just the organizational meeting? So we're talking about pushing this to January then? Or can we do it during the December meeting?
No, I was anticipating to do it at the reorg meeting, because the reorg meeting without an election is usually pretty straightforward.
Yeah, well, and I was anticipating January, but it's up to the council. There's no timing issues associated with this item.
I would personally wouldn't mind doing it at the reorg meeting. I would personally wouldn't mind doing it at the reorg meeting. I mean, we do have a tradition of doing that. I know when Ron and I were elected, they adopted the garbage rates before they swore on the new council.
Right. We've, we've done it when there's timing issues, and we've had to use that meeting. But again, it's, it's your council meeting, so however you would like to agendize it, that's fine. We could do it that night, or we could do this in January. Like I said, there's no association to any timing issue here. This is just a counting issue.
I would personally vote for doing it in the reorg meeting. What's the rest of the council think?
My feeling is I'd just as soon wait till January.
You're probably January, too?
I'm fine either way. I can go either way.
Okay, so one December, one January, one either way. What's the side?
I like January.
January.
It's either way, so you can pick.
You're the decider, Laura.
No, it depends. If you, if you have a preference, then you are the decider.
I don't have a strong preference. It might be good to get through the...
I tell you what, why don't we, we'll do January, okay? Thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Early, once again.